Hi Board Members, Superintendent, our Executive, Sec, and Administrators. I am speaking to you tonight as a parent on behalf of my two children enrolled in the TIAA ISD, but also as an advocate for all students in the TIAA ISD. My concerns are with item 8B on the agenda tonight regarding the Honors Courses. It started with what I assumed was a rumor, Honors Courses were taken away, then I saw it reflected on my daughter's schedule, no Honors Courses. It really is very, very concerning what kind of message the school is sending to parents, students, and the community when a program like Honors Courses are taken away from children who deserve the rights to challenge themselves academically. I am hopeful that the message to all stakeholders will shift through some explicit and swift decision-making. The students are one quarter of the way through the school year, and how can we make this right? I reviewed the proposed timeline from Superintendent Piles at the September Board Meeting, and I'm going to communicate my concerns through a series of questions. I urge the Board and the Administration to consider these questions while making decisions regarding Honors Courses. What were the findings of the audit, as this audit was shared with stakeholders? If differentiation was the issue, why is the removal of courses the answer instead of support and training? Isn't it better to train and support people than to cut Honors Classes? Why were the courses taken away from students except for English 1 and English 2? Why is there a pre-Honors Track and no Honors Track in math? And why only English 1 and English 2? Why weren't we concerned about the students already in an Honors set of courses in prior school years? How are our children in the TIAA ISD going to be competitive with other students from other districts when applying to competitive universities or jobs? When their applications are next to each other, and one has Honors and one doesn't? I learned about some of the pre-Honors qualifications by asking about my junior high students' classes in August. Students must meet three out of four of the following qualifications for pre-Honors. Meets are higher on the star. My question is, how can this be a valid measure when there are still gaps in learning due to COVID? Teacher recommendation: What are the requirements in the rubric that a teacher uses for recommendation? Is it simply left up to them to say yea or nay without any guidelines? What if the teacher is biased? What if the learner isn't challenged in the classroom to show Honors potential? Eighty-five or higher in the course, are all teachers assigning and grading in the same manner? Are students receiving support that matches their potential? And how does completion of lessons and programs like Imagine Math and Amplify Rooting equate pre-Honors level? I understand that three out of four need to be met, but when three out of four are in relation to the adults in the system, meeting the expectations of their role, this is highly subjective set of qualifiers. In my opinion, and many other districts, Honors Courses should be up in enrollment with checkpoints to ensure that students are successful, not gatekeeping measures to be put in place. There are students who bloom academically at different times. The gatekeeping will get complex and out of control, and worst of all, discourage students from challenging themselves. My final question is, how are we going to make this right for students? Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Ms. Laura Saratos, in relation to the same agenda item. I did mention Ms. Robinson, but she missed the timeline, but it is three minutes.
Good evening, Board Members. Personally, I know all of you in some capacity. Some of you watched me grow up alongside your own children and invited me into your own home, while others I grew up with and played right here on Pearson Street outside this building. Today, I am here before you as a parent who's concerned about the future of the gifted and advanced classroom in the district, and how changes to advanced programs of study are being communicated to parents. Currently, I have a daughter in third grade, and my son is a senior in high school. My children consistently exceed standards in the classroom and on all standardized assessments. My son has been identified as gifted and talented since elementary school, so for the past 10 years, and my daughter was recommended for the gifted and talented program last school year. More on her GT recommendation in a minute. As you know, Chapter 89 of the Texas Education Code requires a school district to provide an array of learning opportunities for gifted and talented students in kindergarten through grade 12, and inform parents of those opportunities. Additionally, all Texas high school students must have access to high-quality pathways to career and college. First, limiting, removing, and blatantly not expanding gifted and advanced learning opportunities such as Honors Courses and dual-credit opportunities is detrimental not only to my children, but all other identified students in the district. My son has never been offered a pre-advanced placement course, advanced placement, or an international baccalaureate course at Natalia High School, which is a blatant disregard for expanding advanced program options for gifted students. However, to be fair, since his freshman year, he has been duly enrolled in Natalia High School and Southwest Texas Junior College for dual-credit courses, and he's been very successful. At the end of this year, his senior year, he will have earned over 45 hours of transferable college credit hours. This is not only a huge savings to our family, but it's a huge boost to his future career. Imagine Natalia High School has 14-year-old teenagers who can perform at the college level during the freshman year. This is a progress measure that should be celebrated, and yet it's not. The district should be highlighting, rewarding, and exposing the success of these students in the early college academy, some of the best and brightest students in the district. Instead, as a parent, I'm participating in conversations with students and their parents who tell me that the Honors Courses and dual-credit program is in jeopardy of being dissolved. This is disheartening, and I hope it's not true. More disheartening is how the decisions for limiting and removing these advanced programs is being handled by the district. Remember my third-grade daughter, who was recommended for the district's GT program last school year? Well, we still don't know if she's been accepted into the gifted and talented program at Natalia Elementary School because there's been no communication. As the parent, I've requested information on two separate dates. My first request was on June 3, 2022, and my last request was on September 6, 2022, and still, no answers and no test scores. Can I just have a copy of her test results? Is my child missing out on advanced learning opportunities she should be receiving per the Texas Education Code, Chapter 89? Is the advanced classroom slowly being phased out without parental notice or parental input in this district? My mother sits here with me tonight. She helped raise many excellent students in this very district through her classroom. It took her, all of my teachers, and this entire community to raise me. In essence, it took a team. Teamwork should include the parents, the Board, the teachers, the students, and the administrators. Teamwork takes communication. I am here this evening to communicate my concerns to you about the future of the advanced classroom and parental communication within Natalia ISD. I need communication back to me. We must stop working against each other. It's my sincere hope that you improve communication with the parents of the district and begin to celebrate the successes of the advanced students, as well as improve high-quality pathways to career and college by inviting parents to the discussion table, invite parents to participate on committees, invite parents to brainstorm best practices for our children, because we know what's best for our kids, and we know what's best for our tax money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Ms. Monica Glazian. I did allow five minutes for Ms. Saratos, so I'll allow you five minutes.
I don't think you made it, though, but thank you.
No, you're fine.
So I am discussing 10B, the addition of a deputy superintendent. Natalia has 11 leaders, three principals, three VPs, a director, special programs, CNI, and our super. What is the purpose of hiring an assistant super? What is in this description that is not already in place? Is this a need for more internal accountability? If effective leaders are in place, this position becomes unnecessary. Criteria includes a master's degree, a business administration equivalent. But what happens when we receive qualifications that surpass our present leader? Do they become overqualified? And what could be the result? This position has been seen to be a stepping stone. It has resulted in preferred leadership, and often with people connecting to one over the other. And could this lead to closed-door duties? Not the intent of the position that's being hired for. Why hire when we have added several positions in leadership charge to be effective in their given roles? Do we question or lack faith that they're equipped to do their jobs? Tax dollars could support our teachers with classroom management training, focus on building relationships with students in order to achieve success. Those are the tools that ensure success. Where's the accountability to measure and maximize student-teacher potential? Have we tapped into our own resources, licensed staff, those with the doctoral degrees, using them as experts to train and to develop? Could those six figures support PDs, filling vacant or part-time roles, adding additional teachers, increasing interventionists, and increasing safety? Has our teacher turnover resulted from failures? Failure to develop instead of criticize? Failure to nurture and demand excellence? Failure to provide differentiated training, and wondering why we have missed the mark? Watching as we slowly push these teachers and step out? Is hiring more the answer? Effective training leads to retention, consistency, satisfaction, and leadership. The result: increased student achievement. Deficiencies in this will lead to decreased satisfaction, decreased motivation, excessive teacher absence, burnout, resulting in higher demand of subs, lessened instruction and quality education for our students, lessened rapport with our students, and a decrease in overall academic achievement. Is the root cause another leader? Are we failing to address the internal controls that lead our district to success? We have top-heavy leadership, highly qualified backgrounds, and I believe that together they can do everything in their power for this description. Where will our money be spent? What does the data show? Who's responsible for this academic success? Does it start in the classroom? And if so, is this position the right decision? Board, I will tell you, you are accountable for the three goals that you guys set in your LSG, and I want you to consider how you're going to reach them. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item three, recognition, principal recognition. All right. So my voice carries pretty well, so I'm just going to go read from here as the board starts to come down. We want to first recognize Dr. Andrea Arreola Hewitt. A grateful recognition of your continued service and support. We hereby present you with the certificate of appreciation. I was going to say, and then we're going to hear it back in the center, hold it still. Doc, you come right over here with me. Dr. Hewitt, you're over here with me for just a second. I'm going to bearish you some more, just a second here. Next one up, we have, again, in grateful recognition for your continued service and support, we hereby present, certificate of appreciation to Mr. Adam Martinez.
One, two, three.
Okay, Adam, you're over this way. All right. In grateful recognition of continued service and support, we hereby present Dr. Lee Myers, a certificate of appreciation.
One, two, three.
Okay, here, give me a second. You guys don't want to worry. Let's get all of you. No, you're staying right in the middle. We're going to get all my principals stuck in the middle, these amazing board members.
No arguing. One, two, three.
So committed to these principals, they spent all day Saturday working on our campus improvement plans and district improvement plans, literally all day, but getting the opportunity to go, want to pause for lunch? They said, no, let's keep working. So compliments to all three of them, knowing what's necessary for our students, and that was our time, dedicated time on Saturday, just to focus on campus improvement, district improvement, and how we present to you and the Board what we're trying to do day in and day out. As always, there's always challenges, and there's always opportunities. So great, we appreciate you. Thank you. We're going to move on to item four, presentations for a teacher incentive allotment presentation by Region 20.
Hello there. Good evening, Mr. Piles. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Christina Mendez, and I am a leadership consultant with Region 20, and I am here with you this evening to talk about the teacher incentive allotment. So have a little presentation for us. There we go. All right, so first of all, what is teacher incentive allotment? So TIAA came about with House Bill 3, and really, it was a way to provide teachers the opportunity to earn six-figure salary. The intent is to recruit, retain, and reward high-quality teachers. So there are three designation levels. So teachers can be eligible to earn a recognized designation, and those teachers can generate an allotment anywhere from $3,000 to $9,000. The next level is exemplary. Teachers that earn that designation can earn anywhere from $6,000 to $18,000. Let me back up, because I said they can earn. They're going to generate an allotment, and these funds are going to be coming to the district and will be distributed to teachers on the campus where they work, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. And then the last designation is master. And so teachers who earn this designation can generate an allotment anywhere from $12,000 to $32,000. And so you notice this range. Let's find out how much teachers in our district would be generating. Notice that at every campus, it's going to be a different amount. And so TEA has a formula to calculate these amounts, not only per district, but per campus. And that formula has to do with rural status and low poverty. And so again, that is really the point, to attract teachers to teach in areas where students really, really need them. And so Natalia ECC, you see up on the screen the amount that each one of the designations would be generating. The elementary, they shift just a tad. And the high school. So again, you see anywhere from $6,000 to $24,000 that can be generated. All right, so now we know how much funds can be generated, so now I'm sure you're wondering, okay, well, how does this work? And so what Natalia ISD will need to do is create a local designation system. And so part of that designation system includes a plan, and so that responds to which teachers will be eligible and what do they have to do to earn the designation. And then the other part is a compensation plan. So once those funds are generated, how will they be distributed? So these are all decisions that the district steering committee will make with input from stakeholders. So when we talk about which teachers will be eligible, well, it really just depends on what the district decides. And so there are certain things that we do need to ensure that these teachers have. They need to be coded as a 087, and so what we're taking away from that is they need to be providing direct instruction to students. They do need to be employed for a certain amount of time, at least 90 days at 100% of the day, or 180 days at half of the day. Example of teaching categories are the grade level and the content. And so here we just have some examples. So for example, third-grade math. Seventh-grade ELA. High school PE. CTE welding. And so again, these are just examples of teaching categories. This slide has a lot of information, so I tried to color-code it. And so first, we decide which teachers will be eligible, and then what do they have to do to earn that designation? Well, there's two pieces that must be included in the system. And so if I'm a third-grade math teacher, or any category really, the local designation system is going to look at my teacher observation score. That's one. So I need to be a high flyer as per T-test. That's one. The other component is, not only do I need to be a high flyer as per T-test, but I also have to have a high percentage of my students meeting their growth goals. So let me talk a little bit about that, growth versus achievement. So this is not about how many of my students pass the star. That's not what this is about. This is about how many of my students have met their growth targets. So I need to set specific targets at the beginning of the year, and then I'm working towards those individual targets. So it's not all my class will be at this percentage. This child will, you know, this will be the target for this child. Each one of my children will have individual growth targets. Then at the end of the year, when I give my post-test, I'm going to see how many of my students have met their growth targets. That percentage, along with my T-test score, if they're both correlated and high, then I may be eligible for a designation. So it's important to understand that this is not something that all teachers will be given or will generate. We do have to qualify for these designations. And again, high flyer as per T-test, and high flyer is I am showing that, I am proving that my students are growing in my classroom based on my instruction. So again, a lot of information there.
Any questions, steering committee?
Yes, whenever you'd like.
I mean, I have a question on the growth. And so when you're talking about the teachers setting growth differentiation between each student, is this something that if I say Suzie needs to grow by 14% in third-grade ELAR, does somebody from Region 20 or the state end up having to prove each of the individualized? I mean, how do you prevent a teacher putting 2% growth versus, you know what I'm saying?
Great question. So yes, so that is a local decision in regards to what is the specific percentage of growth that would be appropriate? And the state does provide various models, about six models, in which districts can use in order to calculate growth. So that, you're right, so that I don't just say, well, so-and-so is going to, you know, this is their target. And so there has to be some sort of a formula to ensure that it's valid and reliable. Yes, great question. So let me see, let me see. So those are the two required components, the teacher observation and then the student growth. Now, the district can decide on some optional components. So they may say, well, we feel that attendance is very important, or we feel that individuals that earn these designations should be coaching other teachers, you know, to help them. So it really just depends on the district and what they choose, but the state does allow us that option for an optional component and/or components. But teacher observation, student growth, that's a must. So this is just a basic example. So you could just say we're doing teacher observation and student growth. You have to assign weights to each one of the components. So again, very simple example, 50/50. And so once we determine that, we also have to determine specific cut scores. So now that I know 50% has to do with my T-test and 50% has to do with my student growth, well, what are those specific cut scores at each one of the designation levels? And so again, that's going to be a district decision. However, TEA does provide us with some performance standards that we can use and/or modify for this purpose. Does that make sense? Yes, okay. All right, so then that's a designation plan. The other piece is, okay, so once those funds are generated, where do they go? So how will they be distributed? And so again, local decision, but the state does say that there are certain parameters. So the state says that 90% of money is generated by designated teachers must be spent on teacher compensation at the campus where the teacher is employed. Now, that 90% could go all to the teacher, or the steering committee could say, well, that teacher will get 70%, and perhaps the grade level will each get a portion. And so again, this is a district decision as to how these funds will be distributed.
What do you see more in that? I mean, from what you see with the districts that are, you know, for instance, like Somerset or some of those, what are they doing? Because I think that's huge, you know what I mean, as far as what the goal is of this program?
When you think about retaining, yes. We have seen a lot of districts go with the 90/10. Some districts will just do the 100%, going to that designated teacher. And so we just share this information so that we know that we have options, you know, because again, we know it takes a village a lot of times, right? And so it's really up to the district. And then again, this is why it's so important to, one of the really key pieces with TIAA is to gather stakeholder engagement. Bless you. Stakeholder engagement, so that we do get this input, so that teachers do have a voice in how the compensation plan is structured. So 90%, again, you know, that has to go to teacher compensation. It could be 100%. Now, 10% may be used for other costs associated with supporting the program. So that could go to professional development for teachers. That could go to a data management system that's going to do the data analysis, for example. It could go to paraprofessionals. It could go to instructional coaches. It could go to administrators. Again, 10%, as long as those funds are, or provided to individuals and/or things that will support the entire system, then we're going to be good to go. Okay, so again, just another simple, very, very simple example. So let's just say we start with 4 through 8 math teachers, 4 through 8 reading teachers, Algebra 1 teachers, and E-LAR teachers. So it's also important to note that teachers that do have So it's it's also important to note that teachers that do have a National Board certification automatically qualify for the recognized designation. Okay, so this is a national credential. So when, if they have that, then automatically, you know, they will generate whatever amount is designated for recognized. Okay, so so these are the, for example, these are the teachers that we're we're going to say will be eligible. So how will they earn the designation? Remember those two things. One is teacher observation, so we have T tests in the district. So that's the instrument that we will use to measure teacher effectiveness. And then we also have STAR growth, a growth component within STAR. And so for each teaching category, we have to have a corresponding student growth measure. Okay, and so in this example, compensation plan, very simple. They're saying that once those funds will be generated, the designated teacher will receive an incentive check when in May. Okay, so again, just a very simple example. But it, but the the district does have flexibility in in everything really that's up there. Okay. All right. Another thing to remember, the timeline. And so Natalia ISD, um, will be applying for Cohort F. And so this is the timeline. So you see year one, twenty-two, twenty-three, that's this year. So in year one, we're working on creating that local designation system, the designation system and the compensation plan. And so at the end of the year, we will be submitting an application to TEA. So that application is due on April seventeenth. Okay, and so TA will look through our application. They will provide us with feedback and say, yes, we're good to go. And or, you know what, we need a few more tweaks. Give the district an opportunity to resubmit. Um, and they will be notified in the summer when you're whether or not we're we're definitely approved. Then year two, now we're starting the system, it's it's in place. We're collecting this data, remember, teacher observation and student growth data. At the end of the year, we're going to have to submit all of that data for those teaching categories that we had said. We're going to have to submit those to TEA. And they will in turn send it to Texas Tech University. And that data is going to go through a stringent data validation process. Again, talking about validity and reliability, making sure that that data check, you know, passes muster. So then that's year two. Then, uh, year three, that's at the end of that year, that's when we'll know whether or not our data did pass that validation process. And that's when we'll be notified that we will be generating those funds. Okay, and then the district does need to compensate teachers by August thirty-first of that year. So that's in twenty twenty-five. Then in September of twenty twenty-five, TEA will reimburse the district. So that's another thing just to kind of keep in mind. We do need to make sure that we have those funds, um, in reserve um, in order to compensate the teachers that do earn the designations. And then TEA will reimburse us the next by the by September. Okay. All right, I I try to make it as quick as possible. And I know it's a lot of information, but if, does anyone have any questions? Does anything, you know?
Mr. Garza, do you have any questions, sir?
I just have one question. So once the district chooses to adopt the program and put it in place, are all teachers automatically enrolled or do they still have to take their independent step and say, yes, I'm on board with this program?
Got it, great question. And so again, it depends on the on the district. And so in that example that I had shared, there were, it wasn't all teachers, it was just these. And so you're right, so if in the plan, if we say four through eight math teachers, then if I'm a math teacher, then I'm 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 in. You know, I would be in an eligible teaching category. Let's just say I was a third grade teacher. Well, based on this plan, I'm not necessarily in an eligible teaching category. Maybe not yet, because the district does have an option to amend the plan. And so maybe right now, we're just choosing four through eight math and reading teachers because we have a specific instrument to, um, measure growth. And maybe in some other teaching categories, we're not quite there. And so that is one thing that districts are doing. They're starting small with those, um, teaching categories that they do have an instrument to measure growth. And then they're working on adding other teaching categories moving forward. And so again, that would be a decision that the district would make. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, no, that that answered it. Yeah, go ahead. I have another question, just like, if I remember.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Ramadonis, Mr. Bessa, Ms. Rodriguez?
No questions.
Ms. Vazquez. I guess the only other question I have, and you may not have the answer to this, but do you know how many districts in Region Twenty currently have this? And or how many in the state currently have this?
You're going to put me on the spot. I can find out because it is on the T TIA website. So I can definitely find out and I will share that with you, Mr. Piles.
Um, I mean, I know the closest ones that I know of is Somerset or La Prada because both superintendents brag about it soon. And when I found out what some teachers in La Prada, Texas were making, I was like, that's how you're getting the image of La Prada, that's impressive.
Yes, yes, and and I I will I will get you that number. Thank you for asking.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. This QR code will take you to the TIA website if you're interested in watching a very short video. And perhaps that may answer a few other questions that you may have. And then feel free to contact me with any other questions. I'm at your service and I'm looking forward to supporting Natalia ISD this next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move on to item four B, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, external audit results by Coleman Horton Company.
Good evening, uh, Mr. President, Board Members, Superior Piles. I'm Dusty Ruth, I'm from Coleman Horton Company. And we audited the district's financial statements for the year ended June thirteenth, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. If you all have this board, the audit report. I'll be just going over a few of the final statements and a few of the notes in the audit report. Have any questions throughout the process, let me know, we can go over them. Uh, starting on pages four through seven. This is our opinion of the the district's financial statements. And on page, in the second paragraph, it reads as follows. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, their respective financial position, other government activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of Natalia Independent School District. That's a June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is known as an unmodified or continued opinion and is the highest level of assurance offered than expressed in a set of final statements. And once again, let's say, normally, her staff do a great job in the books. And the main pages I want to go over next is on page fourteen. This is your statement activities for the year. If this, this statement brings all your, all your assets and liabilities onto the books. And at the bottom there, the third lineup is your change in net position for the year, which was a positive net change of two million, two forty-three, eight forty-four. Leaving the district with an ending net position of seven million, nine fifty-nine, six fifty-nine. The next, uh, page, page seventeen. On page seventeen, this is your, basically your general, general fund, fund balances and all your fund, fund balances. And the first column there is the general fund. Your total, total revenues for the year is thirteen point seven million. About three quarters way down, your total expenditures for the general fund is thirteen point six million. So you had an increase for the current year in the general fund by one hundred nineteen thousand, six ninety-eight, leaving the general fund with any fund balance of seven million, thirty-four thousand, thirteen dollars. The next fund over is the capital products fund, and a decrease of four point four million, leaving you with the ending fund balance of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven ninety-six. Your construction is about completed, so it's almost down to, getting down to zero for fund balance. And all your other funds had an increase for the current year of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine seventy-five, leaving those with an ending fund balance of one point six million. So your total fund balance at the end of the year was nine million, seventy-four thousand, seven twenty-nine. And the next thing, I just moved over, just one of the notes in the audit report on page thirty-five. Note J, this is your change in long-term liabilities. The balance at the beginning of the year is a little over thirteen point six million. Retired, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, two forty. Your ending debt, your debt, ending debt, twelve million, six fifty-eight, nine seventy-six. And next year's principal due is one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five eighty-four. And page forty-seven is the next schedule. Page forty-seven is your budget and actual for the general fund. The first columns are the original budget, the next column is your final budget, the third column is your actual amounts for the year. So your final revenue budget was thirteen point four million, your actual amounts was thirteen point seven million, so a positive variance of twenty-sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Your total expenditures, about three quarters way down, your final budget was fourteen point seven million. Your in, actual amounts was thirteen million, six twenty-four, three seventy-nine. So another positive variance of one point one million. And you did not have any budget over expenditures in the general fund. And the last schedule, the page sixty-five to sixty-six. On page sixty-six, this is your schedule of the liquid tax receivable. At the beginning of the year, the the big balance was three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight forty-eight. You turn, total, total current year tax levy was three point nine million. Maintenance collections, two point eight million, debt service collection of nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, adjustments of sixty-eight thousand on negative. And our ending balance at the end of the year is four hundred and twenty-six, three ninety-five. This is what the district's residents owe the school at the end of the year for tax, for our taxes. And that was the final thing I was going to go over. Any questions about the report or anything else?
Mr. Garza, any questions? Ms. Ramadonis? Mr. Bessa? Ms. Rodriguez?
No questions.
Ms. Vazquez? Okay, I don't know, just credit to Ms. Ror, our admin, Superintendent, our admin for another job well done. Uh, finished in the black again, but I also know we were able to take care of lots and lots and lots of needs around the district also without just putting a bunch of money back into fund balance, so. Just a job well done, appreciate your cooperation as always, your company always does a great job, so thank you.
Thanks, sir.
To Mr. Horton, thank you. We will move on to item five, public meeting to discuss the state's financial accountability ratings for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one first rating. Ms. Ror? Actually, I'm going to skip real quick, just down, just so we can, um, where is the? I'm going to move down to ten C to discuss and consider approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two independent audit report. I'm going to make a motion, we accept the audit report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes six oh. All right. Now we'll go back to Ms. Ror.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board Members, and Mr. Piles. This evening, I will be going over Natalia's first rating report. If you are new to us, FIRST stands for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. All Texas public school districts are required to report the results of the state's financial accountability system each year. The system is designed to provide transparency, meaningful oversight, and encourage districts to continuously improve upon their financial management practices. Natalia ISD has earned the highest designation that a school district can obtain. And tonight's presentation will focus on the explanation of those indicators and how we got to the determination of our rating. Okay, so School FIRST, what is School FIRST? Um, like we briefly talked about, uh, School FIRST is a financial accountability rating system that holds districts accountable for the quality of their financial management practices. The purpose of School FIRST is, um, for school districts to, um, provide maximum allocation for the possible, um, instructional purposes. Uh, the School FIRST is a tool that creates the quality of the local management and the decision-making processes that the school district uses concerning their financial resources. All right, so how does this, uh, rating become a rating? Uh, this slide here basically talks about, um, what the superior designation is. So if a school district gets between, uh, ninety and a hundred points, uh, you basically get a superior rating, which would be an A. So this system is very much like the standard grading system in our schools. Um, it, you can get a maximum of a hundred points. And, um, just like you can see here, if you get between eighty and eighty-nine points, that is, um, above standard achievement, uh, and that would be a B, and so forth and so on. There are some indicators that are what's called, uh, they're called ceiling indicators. Um, and those actually carry a lot of weight. For example, um, ceiling indicator number seventeen, uh, we're going to go over it in more detail, but just as an example. Uh, the question talks about material weaknesses. So if our external auditor were to say that our audit report had material weaknesses, the highest score, regardless of however many points every other indicator got, but the highest score the district could get is a seventy-nine. So again, we could achieve perfection in all other areas. But if this indicator here, because it's called a ceiling indicator, if we miss the mark on that, the highest grade the district can get or earn, um, would be a seventy-nine. All right, so, uh, the first report contains twenty, a total of twenty indicators. The first five being what they call critical indicators. And that is exactly what they sound like. If I miss any of these indicators, I basically fail my test, I get a zero. The next fifteen indicators are referred to as the solvency indicators. And those are six through fourteen. And those basically talk about how is the district's, or what is the district's ability, um, to pay its longer, long-term debt obligations? And then the last fifteen, uh, through twenty indicators are referred to as the financial competency indicators. All right, so let's take a look at those first five indicators. Number one, now bear with me, I am required to go through each and every one of them. Um, and I will be happy to take any questions, uh, at the end of the presentation. Okay, so indicator number one, was the annual financial report submitted to TEA on time? Now, remember, this report or this rating, uh, is a year behind. So these, this information, these questions are asking, uh, about fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Now, we know that year is closed, it's done, it's gone, it's been audited, so this is basically the result of that audit. So indicator number one, did we report our financial report on time? Yes, we did. Got the first critical one, so we're off to a good start. Review the AFR, which stands for Annual Financial Report, for an unmodified opinion and material weaknesses. So when an auditor is able to conclude that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, this is expressed as an unmodified opinion. I know it sounds a little bit backwards, but that's, sometimes that's just how accounting lingo is. So we passed indicator number two. Number three asks, was the school district in compliance with all of our debt payment agreements? So did we make all our bond payments in time? Um, all of our construction, any kind of copier leases that we have, so any of that debt? Yes, we did. Did the school district make timely payments to the TRS system and all of our payroll taxes? Um, yes, we did. Now, indicator number five does not get, did not get scored this year and hasn't been scored, uh, for the last couple of years, uh, ever since the, uh, inclusion of our, um, the TRS obligations that we are now required, it's a GASB thing, we're now required to include what the liability- what the liabilities would be for the district, so that indicator there is not scored. All right, so we passed our five critical indicators, so we are off to a good start. We haven't failed yet. The next set of indicators are, again, what we refer to as the solvency indicators. So these, these next indicators refer to a district's ability to pay its long-term financial obligations. So those, you're gonna see some questions in here about long-term liabilities, or, you know, to assets ratio, what our budget to actuals ended up being, and we have a ceiling, a couple of ceiling indicators within, within this section as well. Okay, so number six, was the average change in fund balance over the last three years, was it a less than a twenty-five percent decrease? So we actually passed this indicator, and if you read the remaining question, it wants to know, did our fund balance, it's asking how quickly is it declining? And if it's declining more than twenty-five percent over the last three years, it wants to make sure that we have more than seventy-five days of operational expenditures within our fund balance, which is equivalent to about two and a half months. So do we have that? Yes, we do, and did our fund balance decrease over twenty-five percent over the last three years? No, it didn't, so we are good. Was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund sufficient to cover operating expenditures? It absolutely was. As of the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, our fund balance was hovering just at about six point nine million, so we more than covered this indicator here. Indicator number eight, was the measure of the current assets to current liabilities, was that ratio sufficient to cover the short-term debt? Yes, it was. This indicator measures whether the school district had sufficient short-term assets at the end of the year to pay off its liabilities. Indicator number nine, this indicator simply asks, did you spend more than you earned? And no, we did not. We remained in the black, and we had more than sixty days of cash on hand. So that passes this indicator. Indicator number ten. Now this is an indicator that was, again, it was not scored mainly due to COVID, because of all of the uncertainty with the school district, less than ten percent variance when comparing budgeted to revenue. So with all the uncertainties with, with COVID, ADA was up in the air for a lot of districts. We, a lot of districts around the state did actually decrease in enrollment, there was just a lot of shuffling around kids, so there was, this indicator was not scored. It will be for the following year, so we did get a little bit of grace in this, in this indicator. Number eleven was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to cover or support our long-term solvency. This question is like asking someone if their mortgage exceeds the market value of their home. So in other words, are, do we owe more than the home is worth? Or, you know, do we owe more in financial obligations than what we actually have in the bank? So we don't, we are actually in a good, positive financial position here at the district, so we pass this indicator here. Was the debt per hundred dollars of assessed property value ratio sufficient to support future debt? So this indicator asks, it, it measures the percentage of the budget that Texas, that Texas school districts spend. Wrong one, sorry about that. This indicator asks about the school district's ability to make their debt principal and interest payments. Did you meet and exceed the target amount for School FIRST? Yes, we did. Indicator number thirteen, here we go. Was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold? So this indicator measures the percentage of their budget that Texas school district spends on administration. So this indicator looks at how much you are spending on, on your instructional resources, which are your, your instructors and your librarians, and, and all your professional development. So it takes a look at that, and it divides it, that's your numerator, and it divides it over your administrative functions, which are school leadership and general administration. So as far as the school district's administrative ratio, we got all the full ten points here, which means that we are not top-heavy, and we are, and we do have, we do meet the ratio here, and we got the maximum points for that. Did the school district, indicator number fourteen, did the school district not have a fifteen percent decline in the student-staff ratio over the three years? So as you know, here, over the last three years, we've kind of grown a little bit from year to year, so we did get all the, all the points here on these indicators, on this indicator. Okay, so the last five indicators are referred to as the financial competency indicators. So number fifteen says, was the school district's ADA within the allotted range of the district's biannual pupil projections? So on a biennial basis, we are required to report to the state what we think or what we predict our average daily attendance is going to be. So we are actually one of the, one of the few districts in Texas, from, from what I learned today, that actually gained students post-COVID. So that does says a lot of good things about our district, good things are happening here. So we did not fall back in our enrollment, we actually increased in students. However, due to COVID, we, this indicator is not being scored, again, because of the uncertainties of COVID and the ADAs and everything going around the state, so, but it will be scored next year. Did the comparison of the P E M S data to like information in the school district's A F R result in a total variance of less than three percent of all expenditures? So this actually is a very important indicator. It measures the quality of the data reported to our P E M S, of our P E M S data to T E A. So if there's basically a less than three percent error, we kind of have a little margin just to make sure that what they call data integrity, that the integrity of our data is, is good data. So that also gets tested, and we passed. And as you can see, this is a ceiling indicator, so it is weighted very heavily. If we would have passed this, we probably, our highest, it says, if, if we had not passed this, we would have gotten a B, and that would have been the highest grade that we would have been able to get. Okay, almost getting through here. Did the external audit indicate that the annual financial report was free of any material weaknesses? So again, this is another ceiling indicator. So yes, we were able to say confidently that this audit was free of material weaknesses. Did the external audit? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Number seventeen was the indicator that talked about non-compliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, and federal funds. So yes, we passed that one. Number eighteen was the indicator that talked about whether our annual financial report was free of material weaknesses. And then number nineteen, did the school district post, did we post all of our financial information like we were supposed to, with all the legal requirements related to financial transparency? Yes, we did. And then our final indicator, did the school board members discuss the district's property values at the board meeting within a hundred and twenty days? So I know that I cover this very, very well, and I always provide our presentations to our auditor to make sure that he is aware that we do cover everything that we're supposed to cover with our board as far as our finances are concerned. All right, so Natalia did receive the highest designation of a superior achievement for this year, which was a two-point increase from the prior year as well. I would like to share that. I am very proud of that. Our staff works very hard to make sure that all of these indicators, they're just, they're just pitfalls. There's so many areas in school finance that, that one can just trip and fall, but we, we did a good job. There's any questions?
Ms. Ramadonis? Ms. Rodriguez? Ms. Foskis? Ms. Rodriguez? Ms. Foskis? Thank you. Do you have the second piece also for the first reading? Or is that, was the whole thing? Okay. Two different documents, so I wasn't sure. We will continue with the Lone Star Governance, item number six, Beginning of Year Assessments, Ms. Lopez, and our principals.
Good evening. I'm here to share with you the Beginning of Year BOY assessments that we've done in accordance with the Lone Star Governance. Just to give you a little background information, so our Beginning of Year BOY is given through the T E A B O Y system for our mathematics and E L R, starting with third grade all the way up through Algebra I and English I and II. We also assessed our science and social studies, even though they're not part of our Lone Star Governance goals, we still like to report that information since we do, it is assessed curriculum. I mean, those were given through, the B O Ys were given through district creative assessments that were based off released tests from previous years. We've also, we gave it through, excuse me, assessment window September, through the first, second week of October, and of course, you see the, the actual tests that were administered too. I do want to stress that the, all of the B O Ys are current grade level TEAKs. So for example, if a student is in third grade, he took the third grade STAR test, which would be administered at the end of the year. So this means that they took a test on TEAKs or texts that they have not been taught yet. This is just so that we can create a baseline for where they are, so that when we provide you interim data and end-of-year data, you can see the progression from beginning, middle, to end. We're gonna start with our E C C campus. So again, our kindergarten, first graders, second graders, they are not STAR tested, but we do believe that what happens in those grade levels is what gets them to third grade in order to be successful on that test. So we did administer reading and math tests to them. Reading fluency is actually administered through our InClass Amplify System program. If you have students in the school system, you would have gotten the report from Amplify about your child's reading. You'll notice here, we've got our second grade, third, first grade, and kindergarten, excuse me, stats. You'll see the did not pass, did not meet passing standards. Now, I do want to share with you where it says approaches meets at this grade level, because it's not assessed as a STAR. What we're looking at really is below, well below, at, and then above grade level, not necessarily the meets, but we just kind of made it so that you could understand or relate, relate it to the STAR.
Good evening. Just to think a little bit about, in response to the data that you just saw with our students in Kinder first and second, we, these are our efforts. We have a lot of support from our curriculum instruction staff to ensure a dedication to our literacy components. We spend a lot of time with our teachers going through the Reading Academy. We learn extensively about, you know, sound literacy components, and so they're helping us to plan and make sure that there's dedicated time to items like phonological awareness, read aloud, shared reading, writing, for example. In addition to the Amplify being an assessment, there's also a portion to that software that is very guided to the teachers and then, as a result of those data, to show what a teacher can then lead her, her students into. So we're using Amplify software to really closely progress, progress monitor the students. Something else that we've done with assistance of C N I, we worked diligently this summer to really look at the scope and sequence in rather than aligning the, the order in which TEAKs are taught. According to the book that we have, we really are looking at the curriculum management system and aligning ourselves to that rigor in the E L R. We had been doing that in math, and we spent some time working on that. And of course, there are just an array of campus-wide literacy activities that we have for all of our students to, to support a culture of reading and a love of reading.
For our Kinder through second grade for math, we had a district creative assessment that were given to the students. You'll notice, again, the approaches meets masters are the at, above, below, well below, and so the fourth. The did not meet is, of course, the well below. You'll see the sixty-five percent for our second grade, our first grade is at ninety-nine percent, and our kindergarten is at twenty-nine percent.
So again, in response to these data, looking at what students, it was a locally based assessment that was created for the students. The, the reading was the Amplify, and the math was a locally developed assessment, again, because Kinder first and second students don't have that STAR-tested type items. And so we realized very quickly that we needed to respond very diligently because of the students and what they're showing at this line, at this time of the year as a baseline. So we are certainly using the assistance and support of curriculum instruction staff, again, to really plan with the teachers, Kinder first and second, weekly. Now we're going to kind of shift that focus and, and make sure, through some walkthroughs and some observations, that we can continue to support them. Another item that we are doing in response, response to the data is implementation of the iExcel software, and with specific emphasis on a student's skill practice, practice, and monitoring their advancement towards mastering. What does that look like? It's a very prescriptive way in which a student practices those skills and then monitors to see how they're doing. And it's an engaging way, but that's how we're responding to the data in regard to specifically number operations and algebraic reasoning.
We're gonna move on to the elementary school grades three through five, which are assessed on the STAR. And we look at our reading data for our third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. The approaches meets masters, and of course, the did not pass is aligned to the STAR assessment. You'll notice that for third grade, we're sitting at forty-nine percent did not meet. Fourth grade is at fifty-seven percent, and fifth grade is at forty-six percent. I want to remind you here that this is, these are texts that have not been taught to the students, so we're sitting fairly strongly, I believe, at about the forty and fifty percent mark at the beginning of the school year.
In response to the data that we're seeing now as a baseline for third, third, fourth, and fifth, I'm very proud to say that we, with the support of you all and, and our, all of our administrators, we, we are making sure that all of our teachers, Kinder through fifth grade, which is above and beyond what the state is requiring, including teachers of special education students, are enrolled in the Reading Academy. They would have completed it last year or this year, and so I'm tagging along with them and going to their online Zoom meetings again this year, just to, to give that support. So we will have had all of our teachers enrolled in completing the Reading Academy. Again, like Kinder through second, we're using Amplify software for us, just for progress monitoring. One thing that we did differently this year was to designate small group instruction time in the master's schedule. So there is a dedicated time that our teachers have the small groups, and what that means is they're, you know, in response to the data where a, a student would be pulled, for example, to the teacher's table, and the students are going around to different stations and working on reading-type skills. We also have a dedicated intervention time in the master's schedule, it's a thirty minutes that is dedicated to intervening, and students move around a little bit. And that's specifically in the master's schedule, so it's very transparent. Everyone knows what's going on. Again, campus-wide literacy activities that we have that are so numerous to even mention, and again, the alignment of the rigor of the TEAKs resource that we have for our reading in response to these data.
Here you'll see our math scores, again, third through fifth. You'll see a higher percentage here on the did not meet the passing standard, eighty-four percent at third grade, fourth at seventy-nine percent, fifth at sixty-seven percent. Math is slightly different than reading, because some of these skills have never been taught to these students before. So again, we're talking about texts that these students have never seen these type of problems, whereas reading with literacy, it depends on their reading level. If they're even, you know, up a grade level on reading level, it's gonna show on the B O Y.
So a couple of things that we mentioned with Kinder first and second, similar for third, fourth, and fifth. With C N I support of our students, I would, I'd like to add that the teachers in third, fourth, and fifth grade in math have also taken, they are, they are taking part in a grant program called the TechSee My Plan, and that is very specific, very customized professional learning for each of those teachers, and it's, 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 it's quality research-based professional learning that's tailored for them as teachers. And then again, also embedded intervention time in the master's schedule for, in the area of math as well.
Moving on to fifth grade science, you'll notice that our did not meet was at fifty-seven percent with those that approach us are above forty-three percent. Once again, stressing that the texts have not been taught. Once again, stressing that the texts have not been taught.
And for science at the elementary level, we did increase the number of minutes that we have for instruction for science in fifth grade from 45 to 60. We did, we, you know, it was new to administer a beginning of year assessment in science. And so we were able to capture those data at this time to establish a baseline as well as reading and math. And we were able to move some things around physically so that our science lab is available to all elementary students and the teachers sign up to go and use that hands-on lab and the expectation in fifth grade is that 20% of the lesson delivery of instruction will be hands-on instruction.
I think we're going to move on.
I'm going to stop you just real quick so I can make sure we don't have any questions at the elementary level because I'm assuming obviously that is going to be different on every campus level. I'll start on this end, Ms. Voskis, do you have any questions?
No.
Ms. Rodriguez? Mr. Bessa? Ms. Almandades? Mr. Garson?
I'm just curious, so on the, so the assessment that's given at the beginning of the year, is it the same assessment at the end of the year?
No. No, so the BOY that is given right now was last year's release test for third grade, let's say. Let's say if I was a third grader, I'm taking the 2022 release test.
Okay, so you're taking one-year?
Yes.
Late version for the current grade.
Correct, but it's still current grade level.
I guess the only question I would have is that, when do you plan on, for instance, I know sometimes we relate to our own kids, but obviously that stands on experience we have. When do you plan on starting tutoring again? I mean, I know that's normally, is it still normally? Can I get, it's more hours and overworked and I'm baby and all that good stuff. But when do y'all plan on starting tutoring again? Because I know for my individual child, that really helped them, the more breakouts.
Yes, sir. That's a great question. Thank you for asking that. I should have mentioned that earlier. We have that dedicated 30 minutes within the school day. That's that intervention time. What our plan is that as a result of our mid-year, we'll take a test called an interim test. It's, it'll be online, it'll be from the state, similar type testing experience that the students will have. As a result of that, late January, we will take that test. And so as a result of those data, then we plan to do after-school tutoring. And our reasoning is that, so we don't have after-school so long, you know, throughout the entire school year, but to really target those couple of months before the test.
And I guess my only other comment would be, you know, we've sat here, some of us for too long, I guess, or not too long, but for a long time, and we see kind of the same pattern and we watch kids get behind. And are we starting tutoring too late by starting at third grade? I understand that is where tests begin, but we watch so many kids come from kindergarten. I have a first grader that can't read his letters still, and that's really frustrating as a parent, that my first grader can't read his own letters still. So I just wonder like, how long will wait till these kids get to third grade and then they get so far behind that they don't know these basics that it's going to take with literacy, like she mentioned earlier, if you can't read, you can't hardly do any of these tests right. So I'm just wondering, you know, if it's something, I know it's probably not something many districts do, but because we have so many kids that get so far behind in all of the different levels, if we should start tutoring at an earlier time?
Thank you. Good, very good question as well. We do start tutoring, after-school tutoring in second grade. We did, since I've been at the elementary, we've begun at second grade. In addition to that, other supports that we have in place for kinder and first grade students, for example, we have to think about the developmental appropriate, you know, if it's appropriate, and we have to really take into account case by case. But even with pre-K coming out of the first time of the assessment, first, I'm sorry, the first of the year, we look at those data going into kinder to say which students, you know, for example, know their letters already and that kind of thing. So in kinder and first, we also have things like our intervention teachers. We have two that serve ACC and elementary. So those students might be getting support inside the classroom or they might have it to pull out as well. So there are those things that are embedded into the school day and we do start doing the after-school in second grade.
And Dr. G, more conscious effort with tiered instruction, tiered support within the classroom, correct as well?
Yes, that's that dedicated time.
Conscious of this as well, which is identifying our tiered support, so not just the children we pull out, but providing a different instruction within the classroom as well. And one thing I'm negotiating with right now is with Region 20, because one concern I do have is teacher burnout. So I am agreeing with Ms. Roth at Region 20 in regards to see if there's a way we can solicit some more tutors for after-school, just so we don't beat up on our teachers as much. So that's a negotiation and conversation at this point. But that's one thing we're looking at, is working more closely with the region center to provide some of that ongoing support, because that's been a challenge for all our small rural areas, is it's that same teacher. They also have children, they also want to go to different events and different activities, but the demands are also with their class. And you know anything about elementary, ECC, at high school, junior high, staff, they'll give everything and forget to be that parent sometimes. So that's one thing we're looking at as well.
So taking a look at the junior high reading, again, this was the TEA BOY assessment, which would have been last year's STAR release. Excuse me, sixth grade was sitting at 40, 51% did not meet, 49% met, 47% met with 53 did not meet for seventh grade, and then the 65 met with 35% did not meet. Again, strong start, I think, for reading. Again, being beginning of year and still having the rest of the year to teach the texts.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Powell. As Ms. Lopez mentioned, we were being able to have our students take our beginning of the year assessment. And as a result of that, we've developed some things that we want to continue to work with our teachers and staff and students on. So we, as a campus, decided that we were going to be wanting to meet the requirements of House Bill 4545, not necessarily wanting to extend the day for our students for the whole year, but we wanted to make sure that we align our master schedule to meet those efforts. So we have incorporated accelerated instruction classes in our master schedule to be able to help support those students that are in most need because of the demonstrated deficiencies they have already from last year's STAR assessment. So we are utilizing a program called iLit to facilitate learning in those accelerated classes, and that's going to be driving some of the interventions that we're going to be having for those students. We've also wanted to be able to help and support our teachers with some of the data desegregation that we're going to be having based off our assessments and including unit assessments. So working in conjunction with our CNI department, as well as myself and the teachers, making sure that we're understanding where those students are performing and how to best meet their needs going forward. This school year, I've also wanted to introduce to my teachers more of the data tracking and formative assessment tracking. So I've introduced that at the beginning of this year to my teachers. I will say it is something a little different for my teachers, and that's okay. We're going to be able to help them grow and develop those skills and refine their comprehension and their competency with being able to use that data on a day-to-day basis. And then also working in conjunction, again, with our CNI department to provide instructional coaching. So we are looking pretty good in one aspect in regards that my staff is highly motivated at this point. I think they've been able to take very, very well to some of the things that we've attempted to do, and I'm very, very encouraged with the staff at this point with them being able to deliver the focus that we have for reading.
Moving on to math, you'll see again the trend that I mentioned earlier, where math tends to be a little bit more difficult at the beginning of the year, just because a lot of the skills have not been taught in previous grade level. It's a completely new skill for the student. So you'll notice our sixth grade is at 34% passing with a 66 did not pass, did not meet passing standard. 70% did not meet for seventh grade, which means 30% passing standard. And then for our eighth grade, we're looking at 81 did not meet the passing standard, of course, the 19%.
Board, as you see, math continues to be a high-focus area based off of the performance that we have had from our students at the sixth through eighth grade level. As a result, again, we have really, really, really utilized the support from our curriculum instruction department. With that, we also have a brand-new eighth-grade math teacher, new to the profession. So we were able to bring on our eighth-grade math teacher in the summer and also better support our existing teachers that had returned back for another year with us. So weekly content planning to be able to support those teachers, that means the CNI department, they go in, they have an opportunity to meet with them during the conference, to go over a plethora of things that teachers might need, whether it be lesson planning, whether it be just going over some concept skills that they're going to be able to deliver and to teach the students. So that support is there on a weekly basis. I can talk loud enough to be able to have that. Again, working on the data, desegregating the data for our teachers to be able to utilize as they are giving unit assessments throughout the year. And also, again, utilizing some of that instructional support for those students that have demonstrated the need for them to be able to have more support throughout the year with our master schedule aligning accelerated instruction classes. And then also with math, we do utilize a program, you might have seen it earlier, with the iXL. We are going to be using that to be able to help support our students as well. So if you need me to speak up a little bit more, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Also, we have 15 students at the eighth grade level that are currently taking Algebra I. We gave them the Algebra I BOY, and as you'll see, only two of them, 13% did not meet the passing standard. The other, I cannot do that, 13 students were at approaches and meets.
Board, as you can see, we have 15 total students right now with our Algebra I class at high school. Last year, we had Ms. Kathy Martinez at the junior high, and now she has transitioned to help best support the needs of the district as a high school teacher, but she still helps us out with that Algebra I for our eighth grade. Plain and simple, when you have a high amount already performing at a great level, we want to continue to move students from approaches to meets and from meets to masters. I feel we have the right staff member in the right spot to be able to work with our kids, really hear nothing but great positive things about Ms. Kathy Martinez, and again, just continue to encourage her to be able to have that focus. Now, she's getting them to perform very, very well, but to continue to have their performance increase and to be able to make those things, very, very confident that we'll be able to hit that 100% passing mark. But we want to have more than that. We want to have where we can really, really increase those numbers of meets and masters, and I think we'll be able to do it because we have the right person on board to do it.
We also administered the eighth grade science, this was a, this was a district, district created assessment using STAR release tests from previous release tests. You'll notice 69% did not meet the passing standard.
For science at the eighth grade level, we have a brand-new staff member. We were able to have one of the staff members join us from the elementary, so that way we could have our eighth-grade math teacher here for this year. So one of the things that I do applaud her, I actually found out that she does have some background in marketing and it really does show, so she's very active on social media. If you see any of the platforms we do have, that she's very much a strong advocate for her students and also for her to be able to demonstrate what it is that she's doing well in the classroom. So that being said, we want to make sure that we have hands-on learning experience for our children. We want to have those things come to life for them, especially in the world of science. We want to make sure that those things are being done. Now, bare minimum, we have an expectation of two days per week. She oftentimes exceeds that, if not three or more days per week in the lab. So that's something that, again, want to continue to have where we can bring those authentic hands-on learning experiences to our teachers, students. So we also have the data dives to support targeted areas of need. Again, the numbers tell you that we very much have a need to be able to look at where the performance of the students are. And again, continue to support our teacher, again, she's new to eighth grade, and working in conjunction with the CNI department, continuing to really, really have our teacher dig deep into even her content standards, unwrapping the TEAKs, to be able to have that really, really strong lesson alignment of the written, taught and tested curriculum. So we want to make sure that we're best supporting her as a new staff member in the eighth-grade science realm. So we're going to continue to work really, really hard at making sure that we're aligning our standards very much to where they're going to be taught on the test.
Finally, we administered the eighth-grade social studies, also a district-created assessment based on past STAR release. You'll notice here that 97% did not meet the passing standard. I will say this about social studies, it is not a progression from sixth-grade content to seventh-grade content to eighth. This is completely new. They were introduced to it in the fifth grade. However, three years ago, we were in the middle of COVID, possibly not here for half the year. I'm not sure what Natalia was as far as here or not here. So that also might be an impact there. Again, texts that have not been taught yet.
Yes, and as Ms. Lopez mentioned, these children are coming into the eighth-grade social studies class. We were very, very fortunate to have one of our coaches, very, very familiar with a large population of our students, as a large portion of our students are student athletes. Being able to have a coach, be able to come in and deliver the content in a way that's going to be engaging, that's really, really what our focus is. And also wanting to make sure that we have just a focus on making that frequent feedback for our eighth-grade social studies teacher, just because of the fact where you see the numbers where they're at. By no way, shape or form, do we want to have our numbers stay there. We want to continue to have those numbers increase throughout the year. Also helping with some lesson planning to make sure that we're offering support, so that way we have that lesson alignment. And then, again, just really, really solidifying student engagement and making sure that we are having those students really, really connect with the lesson. I can say from my experience, I've had some really, really good social studies teachers in the past, and I've had some ones that really didn't connect for me. So really wanting to read off the students, really, really wanting to see what are the students going to connect best with. In this day and age, we really, really fight the battles of being able to have our students really connect online, which digital platforms, wanting to see how we can be able to have those things connect and make the learning become alive for our students. And again, making sure that we have that as a forefront. But in closing, I know here we're wrapping up for the junior high, I just want to highlight the efforts that I have for my staff. I've been very, very pleased with the receptiveness of all the things that we've been trying to introduce for my campus. But I will say that I'm very, very mindful of trying not to overwhelm my teachers, very, very mindful of trying not to bring on too many things too quickly. We have brought in a few things already and we've already seen a great response. We're going to continue to do that across the campus, but also being mindful of, our teachers are human, our teachers put in a lot of hours, our teachers are having a lot of things that they're being asked to do. We want to make sure that we're being responsive to them and also to their needs. And we really, really spend a lot of time focusing on the social-emotional needs of our students, but our teachers are also needing to have that social-emotional support as well. So it's my job and my front office's job to make sure that we're really recognizing those teachers and supporting them. We have high standards that we're going to be wanting to hold, but we want to make sure that we're supporting them to get there too.
Any questions from the junior high? Mr. Garson?
So if I were a parent of an eighth grader and I wanted to know how they were doing currently coming into the seventh or eighth grade, how would I, why is it more important to assess them on a test that should be in the year versus making sure they're on point with the current level of understanding?
I know as Ms. Lopez mentioned earlier, we want to establish a baseline for our students to be able to best receive support. We want to know where they're at currently, so that way as we do involve them in the content and we're able to have that content delivered to them, we can have a baseline to be able to go back to and really, really gauge how much learning the students have done. But it is going to be something that as we get more and more into the content, we're going to see those numbers increase, and that's the hope, that we have good, solid teaching, our students are responding well to that teaching, and they're able to perform better as a result of the year that we're going to be able to have for them content-wise.
So also, I want to add to what Mr. Martinez said, you know, when it comes to science and social studies, we can't really assess for, before eighth grade to see where they're coming in and out, because a lot of the TEAKs that they learned sixth and seventh aren't going to be on that eighth grade. For reading and math, while we have the end of year from last year's STAR to see where they stand, we also do, in addition to the BOY, we do give, we give screeners. We give the iXL screeners that lets us know what their current reading level is, which we shared with all parents at the beginning of the nine weeks. We do the math screener as well to show where they're at, and I believe iXL letters also went out to share with the parents to show where their kids are currently at. This information on the BOY is meant to just create the baseline and let us know where we're at, so that we see the progress throughout the school year.
Okay, yeah, no, I was just curious on why it would be more important to assess them for an end-of-year self-concept versus making sure they're on point now? And I ask because we're constantly, over the years, have seen these gaps that start out at really early stages in our students. out at really early stages in our students' career and, you know, I just was trying to have a better understanding on is that a better approach to closing these gaps that are existing? Or is it better to, you know, assess them on grade level and then provide that feedback to their previous grade-level teacher so they know how to keep their current class, you know, on point? And also it lets the current grade-level student know or parents know, okay, I understand everything I need to at this point, I'm ready to move forward with continuing the eighth grade reading or math.
Correct. And so, then that's what we do. So, it's two, it's two different things. The B O Y, like I said, is baseline, you're right. It's not meant to help address the gaps that the kids are coming into because it's projecting forward. But at the end of the school year, beginning of the school year, those screeners that I'm talking about, they're meant to provide the current teacher information on where the student is. So, and I'll also give you an example as far as STAR is concerned. So, when a star, when a student meets on a STAR, that's at grade level. It's considered at grade level if their approach is, that means that they have a little work to do and then if they didn't pass, they're not at grade level at all. With the accelerated instruction that we're providing and these screeners that we've done, we're able to help bridge those gaps because we're aligning their accelerated instruction with what's going on in their classroom so that we can try to bridge those gaps. That's what we use for bridging the gaps, be right. The B O Y is not something that we would use for bridging the gaps.
So, why is it that our eighth grade Algebra One students had such a successful result on their end-of-year eighth grade Algebra One assessment versus something else in the subject?
That's a good question.
Yeah, no, I, I think that we have a good population of students already at the eighth grade level that have had a really, really strong, solid foundation with the Algebra concepts that they're going to be able to have through Algebra One. As a result, they have been able to perform very, very well already for them at this point in the year. Now, are there always opportunities for them to be able to enhance those skills? Absolutely. There's always going to be room for them to be able to improve and further refine those skills. As we have heard earlier, the higher-level courses or higher-level content, being able to expose those children to be able to have those even through the junior high level, it's a direct relation to those fifteen students that are right now in Algebra One. Somewhere along the way, they were able to acquire a very good, solid, strong math foundation. It's my hope that we're going to be able to increase that more across the campus because right now, we're sitting with fifteen kids that are very, very much capable and performing at a very high level already in Algebra One.
All right, so in that situation, what are we doing as, as a district to ensure that we're not holding them stagnant since they've shown us that they're, the majority are ready to move on from the eighth grade Algebra One? Basically, how are we going to keep them? They've proven to us they understand Algebra One. So, does that mean we continue on, on, on schedule with current eighth grade algebra? Or do we recognize that for whatever reason, these students have proven or shown us that they are successful? So, what are we doing to continue that growth versus tapering them down so that they remain at, you know, at eighth grade Algebra One? Because we know they're going to be successful at the end of the year because we've proven it already.
And I can answer that just because I haven't had a chance to talk in a while. But if you look at what they actually showed on that, and if you jump back for me real quick, and if you pay close attention to what Mr. Martinez and Ms. Lopez talked about, whereas we had nine students at Approaching, technically that is not on grade level. Four is barely meets. None of these students actually mastered, so there's quite a bit of work still to be done in that classroom, whereas we're very proud of the instruction and the students and obviously, I want to give a little credit to the parents, we're likely because parents probably have a lot more to do, truthfully, to the student's success in this class than instruction, but we're working on it. So, in that process, I would say in this area, if you're asking what we're going to do, I still see work to be done.
Right, yeah, and you know, it throws, it throws me off because I'm so used to seeing the opposite, you know? But I do, you know, you know, I'm all excited because we got kids that are at least approaches, you know?
Well, but I mean, I think the comment that, the comment that probably threw you off is the con, I told Tiffany, I whispered to her that I was going to ask the same question because the comment that threw me off is that, and maybe this is different with this class or this subject, but the comment that Ms. Lopez has made a few times is remember, previous years have not prepared them for that, but yet this doesn't have the same deficiency at the bottom as the other math grade levels, yet I think that, that was his confusion, my confusion is that it just doesn't.
And every content area is different, so math is going to be different than what the LA looks like, than what a science or social study looks like based on when those texts are addressed. So, like these guys here, these eighth graders, they received compacted curriculum in seventh grade of six, or seventh and eighth grade math already. So, they didn't just skip eighth grade math. They took eighth grade math at a condensed rate in seventh grade, so that's why that would prepare them. So, every content's different on how the texts were addressed, the teacs.
Mr. Garza?
Yes.
Mr. Amundadis?
Yes.
Mr. Bessa?
Yes.
Tiffany?
Yes.
Ms. Voskis? You can continue.
Thank you.
Finished the talk. Lost track. All right, we're going to move on to the high school. We're going to start with our English One. You'll notice there that fifty-three percent did not meet the passing standard and again, another strong start for beginning of the year.
Good evening, everybody. One of the things I do want to point out, there was not, we weren't able to really put up on that slide, is this point we're at right now with our English scores is considerably further along in our BOIs this year than we were last year. So, I want to give a big thank you to our CNI for their support both last year and this year as they've been working with my English department as there was quite a bit of turnover there and we are way further along this year right now at the English One and then you'll see it here in a moment with the English Two scores than we were last year. But last year, thanks to you guys, we were able to bring on another English position to help out and reduce our numbers and size for those English classes. This helps to get a little bit more specialized and individualized instruction within the actual English class and during the actual school day, not necessarily foregoing tutoring itself as it was mentioned, but helping us to give more quality instruction with those smaller numbers in there. We are continuing with the implementation of ILET and IXL programs. It helps to give those students individualized practice as well because those, like they mentioned before, those programs help to kind of tailor to those kids' individual needs and then just re, along with all the other training, just recently, some of my English department teachers went through a full two days, I believe it was, with our CNI department helping them really understand all the individual skills within those two con, within their content area.
Moving on to the English Two, you'll see that we are at a forty-three percent did not meet the passing standard, which fifty-six percent would have met.
Yeah, unfortunately, my ILE are good as they used to be, so. Again, just the same adjustments that we made in English Two, again, with the extra person that we brought on this year to bring down those numbers in that, that area, the ILET, the IXL, and providing again that same instru, that same CNI support and the additional training that teachers have attended this year so far.
Moving on to Algebra One, we had sixty-five percent did not meet passing standard, but thirty-six percent meeting that between the approaches and the meets.
As Mr. Martinez mentioned, I did steal Ms. Kathy Martinez from him to help us out with our scores since she did such an amazing job last year with the junior high Algebra kids, getting a hundred percent passing there. So, I did, I was able to coax her away from him and bring her over, so I'm fully, I'm fully, I'm excused. I have full faith that she's capable of raising those scores even higher than we did last year as we, as we scored at the end of the year. And again, the IXL program has done a great job of helping to support our students in their individualized practice and those math skills.
Our biology scores right now, we're seeing an eighty-one percent not meeting the passing standard and nineteen percent to have.
As was mentioned before, science is one of those things where the, a lot of those skills those students will learn as they progress throughout the school year. We did not get this test last year, so I don't have necessarily the same baseline-to-baseline data for our science as we do for other things. However, I do know that at the interim assessment that we did in, I believe, January or at the end of December, I, I do know that our scores were significantly more improved. So, I do believe that when we get closer to the middle-of-the-year assessment, those numbers will move up. Again, with my biology teacher focusing on moving our kids obviously from the do-not-meet into those approaches, meets, and masters categories and pushing those kids that fall within that passing standard of approaches or meets and shifting them a little bit more up to that masters. We are embracing a little bit more collaboration this year with our science department, with our CNI as well, so they're getting a lot more support there. So, I am enthusiastic that those numbers will move up.
Our last E O C is U S history. It was a district-created assessment, as was the biology one before with STAR release. We're looking at five percent did not meet the passing standard, ninety-five percent did. Sorry, I was going to.
And I have to give almost a hundred percent of that credit to the CNI department as they've helped to really kind of get our new teacher. He is not only new to us, he is new to the teaching profession, so I'm not going to mention him by name, but this gentleman has dove in feet-first, head-first, however which way you want to, completely into the water. He's embracing everything that our CNI department's bringing his way, campus administration and the other teachers and he's really helping, or he's really got an enthusiastic attitude towards it and he's, he's doing an amazing job. So, I have full faith that, I have full faith that our teacher will continue to improve.
Real quick, just total transparency because I don't want this later on to come back and be unreflected. I think the numbers there, I'm going to have to double-check those. I'm sorry, I just want to double-check because, because we're using this as a baseline, I just want to make sure that those were the correct numbers for U S history. Any questions for us?
Question for the high school. Mr. Garza? No. Ms. Gromandadis?
Yes.
Mr. Bessa?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Voskis? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to working track one point O. United appearing personnel processes beyond the scope of what is being brought to the governance body for voting purposes. Mr. Garza, have you done so? Mr. Amundadis, have you? Mr. Bessa? Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Voskis? Garza, myself. We will move on to the self-evaluation board quarterly progress tracker that is currently being done each month and is in the works for a forward report and we will do that at the next meeting. We'll move on to item seven A, discuss and approve the Lone Star governance presentation as presented. Do I have a motion? Got a motion by Ms. Rodriguez, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bessa, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of state, I, I oppose. Motion passes six O. Move on to credit report on all board members. All six, I'm sorry, five, all six out of the seven board members have met their credits, including Mr. Garza, Mr. Amundadis, Mr. Bessa, Ms. Voskis, I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Gentry, and myself. We did opt, since Ms. Voskis is not running for reelection, to not have her fulfill and, you know, spend money basically on ours since she will be getting out after the November meeting, so we do thank her for her time. I will open up the floor for a motion to accept the report as presented. Motion by Ms. Rodriguez, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Amundadis, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of state, I, I oppose. Motion passes. I will call for a five-minute break at eight sixteen P M.
In twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-four students, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-one, we had twenty-four teachers with English certification, ESL certification. In twenty-one, twenty-two, it increased to thirty, and in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, we had twenty-five. So, our ESL teachers who are certified have decreased. And the next slide. There you go. So, emergent bilingual students take STAR and TellPass, so they are counted for our district twice. And what, what is TellPass? So, TellPass is an assessment where students are tested in speaking, listening, and reading and writing areas. They are, they emergent bilingual students, performance is measured on proficiency in the use of, in the academic English language. So, our students are tested in four areas. I'll be recording on two areas. So, the two areas we're looking at is reading and writing. They're, like I said before, they're assessed in the speaking and listening, but I'm focusing on the reading and the writing. So, these are scores from last year and these were from March twenty-two. So, you can see our numbers and our focus is increasing the advanced and advanced high students. These are the little ones, kinders, so they're just now starting with their programming. And then, as you see, in first grade, we have students who are in advanced high as well. In one area, there's the reading and then on the other side, it's the writing. And so, again, we're trying to increase our advanced and advanced high areas in those two categories.
For elementary campus, our advanced scores for our E S L students in second grade are seventy-seven percent. And then for third grade, we had seventeen at advanced high and at fourth grade, we had thirty-one percent at advanced and twenty-three percent at advanced high. So, if you notice the increase, it's because the students have, oh my God, the students have it, I'm sorry, I almost spoke my own testing. So, as the students are here, they're receiving education and I'll go into the numbers later because we have more, more staff who are ESL certified in our E C C in elementary. Thank you.
At the junior high, we have advanced high. If you look at sixth grade, we have twenty-nine at advanced and fourteen at advanced high. These are percentages again. At seventh grade, we have fifty at advanced and then twenty at advanced high, as well as eighth grade, thirty in advanced and seventeen in advanced high. And again, this is TellPass. Our students are also counted in STAR like I had said before. At high school, at ninth grade, they're at forty percent advanced high and then at advanced for tenth grade, they're at twenty percent. In the areas of eleventh and twelfth grade, at twelfth grade, we didn't have enough numbers to show progress monitoring and then at eleventh grade, we had intermediate. So, we're struggling at the high school area. So, these are our current numbers. We have a total of a hundred and thirty students. The nine that are at the bottom, pre-kinder and kinder, those are the students who are, okay, from first grade through twelfth grade, we have meetings on the students and we decide whether or not they're going to continue with their programming if a parent signs a denial of services. But these are the students that we have currently at each grade level. And you can see how the numbers have increased in second grade, fifth and sixth grade, and then at eleventh, I'm sorry, ninth grade as well. So, part of the reporting is the teachers who are teaching the students are ESL certified and if they're not ESL certified, if they're teaching in a team, then one of the partners is ESL certified. So, I'm going to tell you where we've been for ESL waiver. So, the state requires an ESL waiver if a staff member is teaching students who are not, do not have an ESL certification. In the past, in twenty twenty-one, we had to submit for four ESL waivers for Natalia and then twenty twenty-one, we submitted the most, which is nine. This year, the number has decreased, but we still have to submit three ESL waivers for Natalia I S D. So, these are the waivers. These are the areas where we need support. These are the areas where we need support. In second and third grade, we need one teacher to be certified as an ESL person. And then at ninth grade, we need one person. At high school, it's a little different. We have a sheltered English class that we would be teaching, and we can also put them on a program. We've been purchasing ESL or bilingual supports materials for the students to be on online system. And then again, at the bottom, it shows how many certified staff we have on per grade So this is our comprehensive plan. We do pay for the English language courses and the exam fee for the staff. We pay for one, about one test, so they can get certified. Our goal is to hire teachers with a bilingual ESL certification. We also provide compensation to teachers who teach emergent bilingual students. And we also have been purchasing supplemental materials for the emergent bilingual students. Does anyone have questions?
Mr. Garza, Mr. Ramadonis, Ms. Bessa, Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Voskis. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Move on to 8B, Honors Course Offerings. Mr. Myers. Doctor Myers. My apologies.
There is a video that we'd like you guys to take just a few moments to watch. Hopefully, I don't know how to.
Play it?
Yes, ma'am. And after that, we'll continue with the presentation.
There is a widespread belief that the job market is just waiting for hordes of ambitious, eager young graduates to slide into high-paying jobs in the corner office. They just need to go to college, right? Well, the data tells a different story. Charts like this imply correlation between higher income and additional education, showing on average that a person with a university degree earns far more money than the average person without a high school diploma. This reliance on averages and perceived higher earnings for having a four-year degree has fueled a college-for-all philosophy, causing educators and parents to encourage going to the university, any university, to major in anything in pursuit of social mobility and financial prosperity. This belief has increased the college and university enrollment to an all-time high rate, resulting in 66% of high school graduates in this country enrolling in higher education right after high school. That's two out of three. The problem isn't that we need more students to attend college. The problem is too many students who enter are not succeeding. For most college students, it takes too long and they simply lose interest. Others are juggling too much, or they discover they picked the wrong major or attended the wrong institution for them. Since most students are told a university degree guarantees a higher salary, many delay their career planning until after college graduation, resulting in 62% of students reporting they feel disengaged because they don't see the connection between a course and a future career. And so today, only a quarter of those that initially enrolled will finish a bachelor degree. You see, our educational system is very well-intentioned but incredibly misaligned. The pendulum has swung too far towards college preparation at any cost and away from skill attainment. We even encourage a college-going culture as early as elementary school, with university pennants decorating second-grade classrooms. And we spend an exorbitant amount of time in high school getting into college. Education is core to our economy, but in order to guide our educational systems and maximize future income, we must understand this misalignment between education and our workforce. At some point in recent history, we have transitioned from asking the more important question of what knowledge and skills do you need to be employable to contribute to your community, to now simply asking, where are you going to college? But in reality, not every degree is direct preparation for employment. With rising education causes, a shrinking job market, and oversaturation of some academic majors in the workforce, graduates keep positions that do not require the education they have received and often with debt they cannot afford. In fact, this misalignment between degrees and job skills causes half of university graduates to be underemployed in what are called gray collar jobs, and 33% of college graduates are still underemployed while in their thirties. We know that success in today's world depends on aligning students' academics with both their skills and available job opportunities, yet there is growing evidence of a skills gap in which many areas are not receiving the essential skills that are needed. Recently, a survey was conducted to find out if the skills found in the lower workforce match the skills that employers need in the new economy. We found that employers experience difficulty finding applicants with strong technical skills, as well as problem-solving skills, applied math skills, and basic technical training. Unlike three generations ago, having hands-on skills and perfecting what you're good at can be more valuable in today's economy than getting a degree or something simply to get money. In fact, when hiring, business leaders say a candidate's knowledge and applied skills in a specific field are more important factors than where the candidate went to school or their college major. The economy and the world have dramatically changed. In 1960, when taking into account all jobs in the American economy, 20% required a four-year degree or higher, 20% were technical jobs requiring skilled training, and 60% were classified as unskilled. But what's the worrying percentage to meet the labor market demand for tomorrow? Georgetown University predicts only 33% of all jobs will require a four-year degree or more in the future, while the overwhelming majority will be highly skilled jobs requiring professional and technical training at the credential or associate's degree level. The true ratio of jobs in our economy is 1 to 7. For every occupation that requires a master's degree or more, approximately two professional jobs require a university degree, and there are over half a dozen jobs requiring a one-year certificate or two-year degree. And each of these technicians are in very high-skilled areas that are in great demand. So while most jobs in the future will require some education and training in our high school, the majority of occupations will not require a bachelor's degree or more. It was the same in 1960, the same in 2000, and will be the same in 2040. Very well-intentioned, the recent college-for-all rhetoric is often misinterpreted as university-for-all. This message needs to be significantly broadened to a post-high school credential for all. Students at various educational levels have left school without essential skills, setting up our children for failure, costing them and taxpayers millions, all while the labor market is desperate for highly-trained skilled technicians. One of the essential purposes of education should be to help students develop the knowledge and skills needed to search for and obtain the work that they find satisfying. Fortunately, today's students no longer need to decide between higher education or career preparation. It's possible and increasingly necessary to achieve both. So how do you position yourself for satisfying in-demand jobs? Let's say you were considering a career as either an electrician or a business manager. You would find that average annual income for electricians is $53,000, only about half of the $99,000 average wage for management occupations. So at first glance, it looks as if getting a bachelor's degree in businesses is a brain. But adding skills and ability into the picture adds a whole new dimension. What if you have the potential to become an excellent electrician but lack the skills and ability to be an excellent manager? Then you should be looking at projected incomes towards the bottom of the pay scale for managers and towards the top for electricians. You would then discover that electricians near the top of the pay scale make around $90,000, far higher than the income of a manager near the bottom of the pay scale at $44,000. Now, this is just one example, but the concept is true throughout all industries. The claim that you will make more money with an increased amount of education is not necessarily accurate, it's just incomplete. That advice is based just on the averages, but known as perfectly average. Everyone has unique skills and talents and gifts. Truth is, the income for the top individuals in a wide variety of technical jobs is far higher than the average income for occupations requiring a four-year degree. Nationally, associate degree earners rank between $29,000 and $76,000, while bachelor's recipients earn between $37,000 and $102,000. But this data only accounts for the 25th percentile to the 75th percentile of full-time adult workers. This means 25% of associate degree holders earn more than $76,000 annually, while 25% of bachelor's degree holders earn less than $37,000. Our world has changed, and the university degree is no longer the guaranteed avenue to financial success as it was for previous generations. And even if you do earn money, that education alone may not be enough. In today's highly-technical, knowledge-based economy, employers want to know what you can do and what you can do well, not just what degree hangs on your wall. And new and emerging occupations in every industry now require a combination of academic knowledge and technical ability. One without the other is insufficient. We need to ensure we're providing students with all the essential skills required to be competitive upon graduation. So before learning classes or deciding what you're going to do next in your life, step one is self-exploration. Take multiple assessments and really analyze your talents and strengths. Step two is career exploration. Understand the jobs available, the income ranges they pay, and evaluate both the knowledge and skills it requires. After researching all the possibilities, then engage in career planning by setting a flexible career goal based on your personality and abilities and not just your interests. This doesn't have to be what you want to do for the rest of your life, just set a goal of what you want to do first. Only then can you develop a skills-based education plan, including your tentative career goal, with multiple education and training options both inside and outside the classroom. This could include community college, military service, a university, volunteering, registered apprenticeship programs, industry certifications, or gaining work experience. There are multiple paths to success. This is especially true if you're an entrepreneur. 77% of students want to be their own boss, and creating good jobs while rebuilding America's middle class hinges on the success of small businesses and startups. The new secret to success is to create ample opportunities to explore and hone one's skills and to choose an initial career aligned with who you are. Misalignment will help ensure one's position at the top of each pay scale. For the sake of our students, our families, and our country, we can't afford to get this wrong any longer. The time has come to redefine the goal for our students. Is the goal simple graduation or degree attainment? Or is the ultimate goal a relevant education to secure a well-paying career where they are both fulfilled and competitive in today's fierce job market? To ultimately secure a competitive advantage in the new economy, all students need a rigorous general education combined with applied technical skills, industry-recognized certifications, and specific preparation for employment. Will they be ready?
I know it's a little bit lengthy, but I feel like if that video way better articulated the message that I want to get across today in today's presentation than this evening's presentation, then I could do so with me rambling on for 10 minutes. Before I start in with the rest of the slide presentation, I just want to mention a few things. The first slide you can see is an honors participation contract. We drafted this honors contract, and it was done to ensure that students are not only being successful within the honors courses, but also understand the importance of maintaining high standards of excellence in their academic pursuits. The honors criteria we will be discussing momentarily was established to set a standard for identifying students who demonstrate through classwork and state-standardized testing a high likelihood of experiencing success in such classes should they elect to participate in those classes. In addition to establishing a standard, we recognize that implementing the honors courses at the freshman and sophomore levels across all core subject, core subjects, caused limitations on students' choices. Specifically, we strive to remove any anxiety that we may put on, we may unintentionally put on students as they have to choose between picking an honors course and picking another course that would perhaps fit better into their schedule, such as an extracurricular course, such as big ant athletics, or any of our CTE courses, which you can see through that demonstration are very, very important as the kids move on past through Natalia High School and out in the world. And lastly, through this established criteria, this was one of the critical components in driving the high school to achieving the highest accountability scores in the last seven years. And along with those scores, our students perform well enough to turn to distinction in post-secondary readiness as awarded by the state, which determines whether or not our kids are ready for college and career. So in order to get that distinction, we had to perform the top quarter within our comparison On this slide right here, I'm not going to read it all for you guys, but essentially what the contract is, is that steeply, should a student fall below 70 at semester's end, they can be removed from the honors course if it's in the middle of the year, or if they fall below 70 at the end of the school year, they would not be eligible for an honors course in the following school year. They must maintain an 80 average in order to stay within for the current school year While the next four slides are set the same way, they will be going through, I believe, it's math, then science, social studies, and then English. But it's just, as you can see on the left-hand side, those are the current course offerings that we do have. The second category right there shows the current teaching positions that we have. So those are two staff, for instance, where it says two staff members full-time and five preps. Essentially, what that means is each prep is one course. So if I have a teacher teaching algebra and geometry, that would be two preps for that teacher. We are not waiting any.
Sorry.
Is that me?
No, that's me.
Sorry. We are not waiting any honors courses in math.
Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
I feel like I might answer your questions right or wrong in jeopardy. Sorry. So weighted math courses will be available to students when they hit the junior, senior level, and they're continuing on if they so choose to take dual-credit classes at that level. Those students can be classified into the criteria in the middle as an accelerated math pathway student. You can see the criteria right there. Essentially, what we're looking at is if the student participates in Algebra I at the eighth grade level, it would afford them the opportunity when they get to the senior, their senior-level math class. Essentially, they could choose not to do any math if they wanted to. If they wanted to take another math, they can do the dual-credit, or we do offer other local math classes as well that would count towards graduation, in which they can pursue a STEM endorsement with the math, with that fifth math class. The English class is the one that we did, we decided to go with English I and English II honors courses, as we felt those were directly able to support students as they went not only just to perfect English III and IV in the dual-credit area, but also their ability to perform well in English I and English II honors helps them across all areas in their respective areas. As you can see again, the second category with the current teaching positions and the number of preps across each teacher. And then we have the different weights that, as our board policy currently states, honors would get you five points, and then dual-credit when they progress into the dual-credit classes. Of course, any who are not just in English dual-credit, it's you six points within their GPA. And the criteria that they would meet is in the middle of that. Currently, we are implementing this pathway as far as honors classes go right now. The science courses are on the left-hand side, again, as normal. We have three staff members that are full-time, they work with seven preps. The proposed pathways for each of these kids, if they were so chose to go about doing those math courses, our biology amp students are those students, again, that took algebra as an eighth-grade student. This affords them the opportunity to take their algebra and should they want to go to that STEM pathway or that STEM endorsement again and pursue additional science courses. As you get into your junior year, students can take anatomy of physiology if they so choose well. I don't think so choose well. It's required as part of that medical program if they're going after that medical certificate. And then as a senior, they have earth, wind, and fire, which is an Omer's course. It's a dual enrollment class that they can participate in through the University of Texas at Austin. And then lastly, social studies, as you can see on the left-hand side, they currently, they progress from world geography to world history, and then when they get to the junior year, they can do either regular US history, or they can do the dual-credit US history. And then when they get to their senior year, they can do government economics here, or they can do a dual-credit government economics as provided through Southwest Texas Junior College. Questions?
Ms. Voskis.
No.
Ms. Rodriguez.
No questions.
Who was on the committee that ended up coming up with this game plan, I guess you would call it?
It was members of CNI, our CNI department. Mr. Prouds helped in a little bit when I saw his assistance, some of the teachers at the campus, as well as myself and Ms. Ayala.
Okay. And did anyone within that committee touch base with any other educational entities to see how they conduct their honors programs? Do you know?
Yes, sir.
I did. I took a look at what other surrounding districts were doing as well.
Okay. And then I guess what are the main points on how this differs from what we had? Obviously, not necessarily on how the instruction is being implemented per se, but is there any main differences with either the scoring or anything like that? I did hear, well, I'll let you answer that question first, I might have one more.
As far as scoring, like I did point out, we were able to achieve this past year the highest scores that the high schools achieved in the last seven years. As far as, I'm sorry, what was the first?
No, the scoring as far as like individualized with the student scores and grades. As far as like the weighted classes, is anything changing there?
As far as like graduation rankings and such?
Well, no, like if they take an honors class for English and they score with the student's scores and grades. As far as like the weighted classes, is anything changing there?
As far as like graduation rankings and such?
Well, no, like if they take an honors class for English and they score, you know, an eighty-two, is that still truly an eighty-two? Is it going to be rated at a higher level?
It's, in accordance with board policy, if you're at the regular class level, it's a four-point-o. The honors is weighted at five, and then if they were at dual-credit, it's six.
So, none of that's changed?
Yeah, so we're still all with you guys.
Okay. And then the last question, I heard you mention something in reference, kind of alluding to with students having to make choices when it comes to courses, when it comes to extracurriculars, BANG, athletics, AG, et cetera. What is changing as far as that is concerned compared to how it was?
In my limited experience here in the district level, as I've started my third year with you guys, all three at the high school, I know that there were students that would have to choose, previously had to choose, I want to get honors geometry, for example. But if within building the master's schedule, if it fell where honors geometry perhaps was first period or last period, whenever we had high school athletic last and BANG first, sometimes kids weren't able to pick and choose a certain honors course just because of the way it fell within the master's schedule in order to make everything work. So, I mean, there were a couple of students that were like, "Yeah, I can't do this this year because I want to be in this class or this class." And so, we felt, while still best preparing them to move forward in their academic pursuits, whether it be at college or whether it be technical school or just workforce afterwards, removing some of that anxiety from the kids, especially with the social, emotional well-being being such a big focus, we don't want kids thinking, "Oh, well, I can't be in this one honors class. Now I'm never going to be able to something." We want to make sure that they still feel like they're being academically successful. They're able to still pursue. I mean, we're working on the rigor every day and push it a little bit harder and harder to make sure that all students across the board from the very bottom to the very top are still being challenged. And we want to make sure that, I don't want to tag on a class to make them feel as though they're lesser than their counterpart just because, "Oh, I can't be in this honors class. My friend can because I want to be in BANG," or athletics, or I want to do, you know, an AG course or a medical course or a graphic design business or now our newly adopted principles of health wellness.
Thank you. Mr. Bessel?
No.
Mr. Almanaz?
That's it.
Mr. Garza?
All right, so, just to clarify, if we have students who want to be part of athletics or BANG, are they still at a predicament where they may not be able to take an honors course?
Currently this year, no, sir. The master's schedule will be able to build that way. We will have some flexibility to make sure that, like, pretty much unless they're wanting to get every CTE course that we offer, which is not possible, but we can still make sure that they're in. The few honors courses that we do have at the freshman/sophomore level, we have some students in our junior/seniors that have probably half their days filled with dual-credit classes and other extracurricular activities and CTE courses. And so, we felt like this would shift to this way. And we are still trying to identify dual-credit courses that we can continue to build into our program to where we can get to that sixty hours. And hopefully, if a student wants to achieve an associate before they leave us, we can get there. We're not there yet. We're going that way. And, but that way, we can, they can still take those forty-five hours that we currently offer without having to essentially sometimes pick between, you know, an extracurricular or a CTE class that they may thoroughly enjoy and trying to pursue that honors class.
And currently, we're only offering...
Can you put the mic just a little more earlier? Or start only offering English honors?
Right now, as far as the designation, yes, sir. English I, English II are designated as honors. We still have dual-credit in every subject matter. So, at the junior/senior level, you can get dual-credit English. You can get math. You can get US history and government economics. I know I'm missing one. Biology, not biology, I'm sorry. Onramps would be our science. Classified as dual enrollment, but it's essentially the same thing.
And planning for this near honors rollout to continue to be successful, what are we doing to prepare, maybe, or anticipate maybe teachers who retire or move off from the district who may have had the honors responsibility? So that, so that there's never a gap in the honors portion of the students?
That's essentially myself binding myself with the hip with Mr. Lopez and making sure that the curriculum is strong and the support should we notice anything through targeted walkthroughs with myself, with Ms. Ayala. And we can make sure we articulate that to the CNI department, so we can make sure that the support's there. Because we don't want to create any gaps where our kids should somebody leave and all of a sudden, I feel like, "Okay, we have a great teacher here," and then now, you know, our kids are not going to be better prepared because of the lack of quality of the teacher. So, that's on me to recruit somebody good. But it's also on me to make sure I'm articulating it to her to help me get support where I need it.
And how do we, or how does a high school approach maybe encouraging teachers? Is there an honors certification required on?
No, sir.
No? Okay. So, then it is quite possible to provide every teacher with the ability to teach an honors course? So that there never is a, again, like if someone were to retire, resign, move on, that there's someone that can always step into that role?
I would say yes, as long as we can make sure that we're highly, we're not highly monitoring that, but as long as I'm very intentional in making sure I get around to make sure that those teachers are providing that high level of rigor. So, yes, sir. I would say yes.
And what is the timeline for implementing?
For, the current stuff that was on the slides is in place right now.
Is what?
Is in place right now.
Okay, so right now, we do have, we have dual-credit?
We have dual-credit.
But we're talking honors, so we have offering English honors then?
Yes, sir. English wanting to.
Okay. Is there any other subject that we should think about offering in an honors category?
We can definitely, we can definitely go back and, as a group, look at it and consider it. I'm not saying that I'm not going to be...
Yeah, we think so. We're going to explore it with summer. We'll be taking a look again. The whole focus in this is making sure we allow students to have a potent path base within what their education they want to pursue. So, again, if we start adding a plethora of honors courses throughout the whole system, then we're going to start blocking the master's schedule. So, all of a sudden, we're going to have the same situation we're in before, which is we're offering a plethora of quote-unquote honors courses and not really meeting the level of the rigors of it. And all of a sudden, our students are having to choose between, "I want to be a trainer, I want to go through health services, although I also want to take honors." So, we're conscious of making sure we place honors in corporate locations as well as creating pathways for dual-credit purposes.
Okay. Go ahead. I'll let you finish, nonetheless.
Okay, so, all right, so we got the English honors. There's this, obviously, there's this current understanding that we are not providing the honors, you know, courses to the students. But I'm just trying to make sense with some of the comments that are regarding honors courses and honors being taken away.
There were some courses that were offered the previous year or years that were designated as honors, but that did not meet any criteria to be honors, whether it be instruction or curriculum-based.
Okay. All right, so the honors courses that weren't being delivered with the correct rigor aren't allowed to be offered?
They never were. They were just totally incorrect, sir.
Oh, we haven't been offering that?
We identified the course, but at no point can I identify curriculum or instruction that meet the criteria for honors, even at a local level.
So, the contract to go into honors, that's the same as previous years right now? Because I recognize some of that criteria.
So, that's an updated draft. I drafted one last year that I felt had a little bit of holes in it. So, this one is an updated contract that I feel is more robust as far as keeping the kids at a high level rigor, but also affording them an opportunity. Because the previous one, if you failed it or if you got below an eighty at the nine weeks, then we immediately removed you. And so, I want to make sure that students, as they recognize the high level rigor that they're expecting, you have basically in that class, we also give them an opportunity to fix a mistake. Should they mess up in that first nine weeks, they have a second nine weeks to fix it by the semester.
So, you would have seen that, you would have seen a variation of this one last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so then the English honors class we're offering right now is fully honors rigor?
Yes, sir.
English I, English II, then switch to the dual-credit, English III, dual-credit, English IV.
Okay. So, what can the high school do to better inform parents on this new honors approach? So that there's no misunderstanding regarding course offerings?
It is something that we talked about. I was really excited when I found that video and I shared it with Mr. Piles and probably everybody else that I, when I, the first day I found that video. But it's something when we get into the spring and we start doing course selections for the next year, it is something that myself and everybody else at the high school has identified that we need to do a better job of informing teachers across the, oh, I'm sorry, parents across the board of all the offerings that we do have, as well as what they lead to as the student progresses, not only with us, but outside of the high school. And so, it's definitely something we want to make sure as we're building a more robust program here in the camp, at the high school, we not only just high-five ourselves internally, but we make sure we talk to you guys as parents out in our community and make sure we're articulating everything that's available and the intent behind it.
Okay.
I have a question here. So, I understand we're switching, or not switching, please, sir. I really thoroughly enjoyed the video. I hundred percent agree that there does need to be a higher focus on technical skills, technical jobs that we have for students. However, for those students who are families who know that their plan is to go to college or know that they want to go into a profession and shadow or gather that experience, that they need a published degree to pursue that profession, preparing them to get into college, are we looking at what those colleges and universities are requiring in terms of, you know, AP courses or high-level courses? And I'm asking because I come from a background of admission counseling and reviewing students' transcripts where an AP course or an honors course is being higher than a normal level course.
And so, we're not taking away the fifteen courses that we currently offer and that we've offered for the last few years as far as dual-credits, so those are still in play. Like I mentioned before, we are looking to try and close that to where we get the last fifteen hours and hopefully get them if they pursue an associate while they're still here with us. We're trying to look at getting those extra five classes that would finish that out. We're making sure that hopefully we can articulate that to the students because the one thing that we are finding is that kids, when they're coming in, in order to get in that dual-credit program, they have to pass the TSI reading test. But the TSI A2 is the technical one for now. But they have to pass that reading test. And as they progress, by the time they get to their junior year, they need to pass that TSI A2 math test. And we're not, I'm not seeing a level of interest that I'm comfortable with and to be satisfied where those students are taking a test and trying to just take a test. We actually, in the last day when we had early release, we had eight kids sit for the test. And that's out of the entire two-hundred-something students. Obviously, there are students that are in our dual-credit program. But if I was to guess a number right off the top of my head without knowing the exact number, about two-hundred-and-eighty-something kids of our kids are not in a dual-credit class right now. And so, if we're only aided out of those two-hundred-and-eighty-something students to not want to at least try that test is something I need to do a better job of making sure I tell them the value of at least taking that test, getting that test ready. So, should they want to take a course or two with us, see how it works, and pursue it that way? And if they find more interest, at least they can get some hours out of the way with that.
Do you feel that we're putting those students at a disadvantage? Those eight, even if it's eight students, that we're putting them at a disadvantage by not offering those courses early on?
Then that was the intent behind keeping the English I and the English II is to making sure, because I'm sure, as you know, like as an admissions counselor, writing and being able to articulate thought on that is core to any sort of success once you get to college. And so, those are the two we had to keep in our master's schedule and build that up to make sure that as we build that level rigor there, and without foregoing the other kids. I'm not saying that if you're not in English I or English II, you're not getting ready. But making sure that we're getting those students ready so they can make sure that they're successful in passing. Because some of those English I kids in that English I honors class have not successfully passed the TSI two reading test yet. So, we're making sure we're getting those skills for not only the reading comprehension, but also the writing component. And so, we're trying to push those kids to get that while also affording them that opportunity to get that industry-based certification. So that way, we're not locking up their schedule because if they don't take a certain amount of courses, then they're not able, while it's being rolled in, I believe it's the 2024, within a couple of years, if they don't take a certain number of CTE courses within a certain thing, let's just take welding, for example. If they don't take a certain number of courses, then they don't get to take that test. And so, I want to make sure I'm affording as much opportunity as we possibly can with, here at the high school level, without sacrificing academics and trying to find that happy medium where I can give the most academic opportunity while also giving the most technical opportunities.
And it's not really a question, more of a statement, but I guess I just fear that we're putting the students, so, other school districts, everyone's to Piles, you said you're looking at whether other schools are offering in terms of honors courses. But if other students are being offered these honors courses and being given that higher level, when colleges are looking at them to see, "Well, this student took five honors courses and this one only took one." The people who are reviewing in the college system don't know that that school district didn't offer those honors courses. They just see that that student only had, only took one, and they don't know that they didn't have, they weren't given the opportunity to take others.
So, admissions will also take a look. And GPA is not the only indicator when admitting into a university or college. What I'm also worried about with our students here is their ability to handle the rigor of instruction. Good example, as you look at different things, my concern is how we're going to help them in, let's say, for example, science biology, whereas I have gaps. And so, the reality is just trying to find that medium between all those different things. So, yes, you are correct. If there's another USA IC out there that's padding their honors classes, not providing the rigors, then your GPA is going to be a lot higher. They're also going to see a turnaround rate of students not being successful at those locations quite high. One thing I would like to do in the summertime is take a look at students five years in the past and actually see how they've done in their lives, whether it's through trades, military, or career in college, just to see if there's something we can do better. So, I mean, one thing I've charged myself with working out and gathering that information and help further this conversation.
I'm going to go back to questions. Mr. Garza, I'm not sure if you were finished yet.
Yeah, I just have one more I was just thinking about. So, in regards to our concern for students not being able to match the rigor, what is, where is the responsibility on the instructional component? Because regardless if it's an honors or a regular class, I think there is also a necessity for the teacher to meet their students at a certain point for the teacher to meet their students at a certain point so that they can be successful and not necessarily write off the student because we're going to assume that they cannot match the rigor. Does instruction differ whether it's in the honors or a regular course? Your approach to pedagogy to help new students progress on the subject matter?
Yes.
Okay, is there, in simple terms, is there something you can share with me so I can...
It's the same rigors and different shaped instruction.
Okay, so that response, it makes me feel like the instructor, the instructor from the honors course is more likely to show out these students who wants to be in class and wants to learn for the basis idea that this is an honors course, don't ask me too many questions, we should already know this.
That's a statement, I'm not sure what the question is.
Okay, well, I was, I'm just curious if instruction differs.
It does.
Okay, so I understand the subject matter will be at higher levels of learning, I understand that. But would the teacher's approach to the instruction be any different?
Yes.
Where they still facilitate and guide the student to get them to the point where they can be successful? Because what I'm getting from you is you're making it sound like an honors teacher is less likely to nurture their student to a point where they can be successful in an honors course versus you're not able to handle the rigors of my honors course.
Again, I'm not sure how you want me to answer that because all you're doing is making statements. So I'm, how do you want me to answer, actually answer that?
Okay, well, I guess where is the school, where is the district responsibility in not so much saying, okay, our students cannot handle the rigor? Where is the district responsibility in saying, you know what, we're going to put, we're going to continue to put great teachers at, can our, all subject matters regardless of its honors or regular, and our students will be successful and we will help them to meet the rigors of whatever course they're in regardless of its honors or regardless of its regular course.
So let's play hypothetical, so since we're doing this, let's play hypothetical just for a second. What would be the cutoff for a student in order to gain entry into an honors class in your thought process?
You tell me, because we had honors courses in the past and it's been established that they were not being done appropriately to match a rigor of an honors course.
So hypothetically, so hypothetically, just for all of us to understand, after the obvious and everything else, let's say we utilize a STAR assessment. So the STAR assessment is Approaching, which on a national standard is below grade level, whereas Meet is on grade level and Master is above grade level, correct? So let's establish that as a conversation piece. So you have a child that took eighth grade ELA or eighth grade ELA, so eighth grade ELA, and they'd like to take honors as a freshman. So what would you use as a draw the line on the STAR to use as identification for that child going to take an honors class? Would you use the Approaching, which as we say is below grade level? Would you use the Meet indicator, which is at grade level, or would you use the Master's level?
Do you think it would be appropriate to put a student who's in Approaches at an honors level?
That was the concern, that's some of the things I was addressing last year. That was actually taking place.
That does not make sense to me, I know what you're saying. Obviously, we would want our master students to be more likely.
More likely to be successful, correct? Possibly.
Do we have, okay. I think we're not going to see each other at the eye of this. I'm trying to just understand the process.
Again, I'd like to explain to the board again, I gave ample time and opportunities last month to open up to a workshop, to discuss this in depth, and it's the rigor and level I'd like to. Over the board, put it upon me to actually work on this with my group. And so here's the recommendations. That being said to the board, we will continue to look at other courses and other programs to follow.
Okay. So I'm going to allow others to ask questions and then kind of, or let me state this now. I'll take this part to blame because I reviewed this agenda, I reviewed these documents, and I did not ask questions ahead of time like I should have. But I don't believe that, I guess, the board, the majority, and once again, each of us have the opportunity to ask questions ahead of time, and to my knowledge, nobody did. Is that accurate concerning us?
Yes, sir.
Including myself. But I think it was the board's understanding, yes, we did opt not to have a committee, but I believe from the last meeting, the majority of the discussion was not that we were complaining about English not being offered as a honors course, but it was what got taken away. So I believe I, along with many here, were under the assumption that whenever you went to meet as a committee, that what was going to be brought back to us was a game plan on how we were going to re-implement what was taken away from kids. What I hear tonight are, I don't want to call them excuses, but is concern over children having to choose between this or this, this or this. What I hear from a lot of parents is these opportunities were taken away. Let's let our children and our parents choose if they're going to choose athletics, band, or honors, but right now, we're not allowing them to choose anything except for English. And I think that is the concern from the majority of the board members that I've heard or spoken to or spoken to me, is what we took away. So it's nice that we have a report, and like I said, this is 100% on me also, and I apologize to you, sir, for not, I guess, fully realizing that this was simply just on the English, but I think the board's concern was what was taken away from these kids. I mean, what one of the very vocal individuals who spoke to that brought up is something one of our own board members just told us, and it is that when they do compare, and it's very competitive to get into some of these universities, and they're looking at what she just stated, she's worked in one of the biggest universities in San Antonio and knows firsthand. That's a fact, not an opinion, not a myth, at least straight from her mouth. So it is a concern. And like I said, I appreciate everyone looking out for kids and what's convenient with having to pick and choose, but that's on those kids and those parents to have that opportunity. But I don't like you can drive five miles north or five miles south, or 15 to the right or 15 to the left, and have these opportunities that we've taken away, and our rebuttal is we don't want to make it tough on the kids having to choose what to take. I don't like that because we've taken away opportunities for these kids. And I feel many times, yes, we have to bring up the rear, we see the data every single month, but I also want to support those top folks who have every opportunity to go and be somebody and to go and graduate from A&amp;M, Baylor, and all these other universities. And I feel like so many times we do hold that back from the GT program all the way down. I know the GT program from when I was in school to now, I mean, GT was really a thing back then, very, very high-level thing and was very organized and very complimentary and everyone knew who was in GT and the opportunities that were available. And I don't see those opportunities anymore. But I do think that, you know, there, I guess, wasn't transparent communication on, and like I said, I will take blame for not bringing this up prior to this agenda coming out. And both of us were very busy and did not get to meet person to person to fully discuss this, so I will take the blame for that. But I do think that's the biggest confusion here is really we're just still talking about offering what we're already offering and I guess just putting some things more in tune. And same thing, if we want to worry about what kids need, have we asked kids and have we asked parents? And every complaint, and he gets tired of hearing me say this, but the major majority of every complaint stems from a lack of communication in this district. And it's not just this administration's fault, it's been this way 20 years. And, you know, I don't have the answer. The only answer I've ever had is to come up with somebody to assist with district-wide communication. I haven't had four votes or administration support in hiring an extra person to help with communication, yet every small issue that happens in this district that causes issues is communication every time. And we're always reactive instead of proactive on communication. And it's always usually one of us having a complaint, all of a sudden, a few people get ripped, next thing you know, we have communication. And it's just, it's just not a good look. So I will stop there. Mr. Armadona, do you have any concerns on these questions?
No.
Mr. Besson? Mr. Rodriguez?
I think you said it off.
I just have one last comment. While I wholeheartedly agree with increasing exposure to technical fields and classes and these trainings, I also don't want to limit the exposure to the possibility of higher education. A lot of our students don't have, they don't see parents, they don't see family members in positions that require degrees or that require college attendance. And again, while I want to increase the exposure to the technical degrees and all of these certification programs, I don't want to diminish exposure to higher education.
Yes, ma'am, I completely understand. That's why we've actually, we took 43 kids, I believe it was, UIW last week. We got a couple other trips planned for kids that will live over the next semester as well.
Thank you all. Thank you. Rating guidelines.
So the grading guidelines, what we're doing as we show you all of this, what we'd like to do is look at the recommended implementation of the second semester, gives us a little bit of time to work through some different things here. So the first thing there we looked at, just to let you know, we did, I did personally pull the policy of H surrounding districts, and within their policies, most of them followed in suit with TESB's recommendations. The only difference we had was EIE and EIC, and I'll mention those just briefly here. So really what we're looking at is what we want to make sure we have in place within the student handbook as well as employee handbooks. So there's some areas you've seen before, the weights are there like you've seen before. What you're starting to see is the weekly grades, which was what we talked about last month. And one of the areas we want to kind of deviate from is for the formative activities, which are your daily activities, we want to take 11 grades instead of the nine. And from the summative activities, which is your major project and test, reduce that from six to four. So you're still looking at 15 grades with minimum of two grades per week as well as a minimum of six grades per three-week period. Also want to recognize and point out that we did miss the mark on certain students in certain content areas, not grabbing as many grades as we needed to. With the calendar being adjusted and everything else, we did manage to balance out the semesters a little bit closer. And so I think some of that with the year starting a little bit sooner, kind of threw us off just a little bit with capturing the amount of grades we should have captured. So that again is our fault. One thing we're looking at as well is the average of seven or higher should be considered a passing grade. Those are struck out because we're going to address those concerns a little bit differently. So as you see those two strikeouts, I also want to reassure you that we're addressing them later on in the presentation and what we'd like to move forward with. And really and truly, we're going to address those within the makeup work. So weekly grades, right now, it states basically third through 12th grade, and that is a review of EIE, as right now, we'd like to actually have it go from first grade to 12th grade using a numeric grading system. And of course, Dr. Hewitt, which she is behind me now, oh, there you are. Okay, so what she wants to work on there as well, surveying the parents, again, like we talked about last month, with the standard-based grading, really and truly, it's more communication to really need to get out, not handing out a seven-page document and expecting our parents to understand it, how to use it. It's really a smaller document with more collaboration, more conversation, as well as our C9 department sharing out some different documents that can assist with our parents at home. All right, makeup work.
So just to look at the grading policy, just a little bit further with regard to when a student is absent. And so we looked at this a little more carefully and wanted to make sure that we all understood it and that we could then ensure that our teachers are following this as a procedure. So say a student is absent, he's out ill, for example. So then, when a student returns to school, he will be given three days to then submit the assignments for which he missed when he was absent. So there's, so a quote-unquote kind of a grace period. In other words, I was absent, I come back to school, then I'm given three days, and for that reason is so that the student has ample time in order to, you know, make up the assignments that he missed. It's going to take some time to, you know, get with the teacher, find out what he missed, learn that, you know, in a way by either attending tutoring or something like that. So after those three days of grace period, then it would then be considered a late work, right? So then, after the three days, a student would have on day one, no higher than a 90, on day two, no higher than an 80, on day three, no higher than a 70. Students, of course, would be responsible for obtaining the makeup work. Again, we're talking about when a student is absent. And if a student is absent for an extended amount of time, then they should be making up, they should make arrangements with their teachers for their makeup work. An extended would be a prolonged illness or something to that effect. One of my colleagues will explain the next part.
I'm just going to squat down, pick it up, settle. There you go. While it's self-explanatory, essentially, we just want to make sure that it was articulated out correctly for everybody to see. This is not when kids are absent because of their illness, but when the due date comes up, if the kid is present at campus, does not turn in the work, the kid has up to three days to submit that work, it still receives partial credit of some sort. After day one, a 90, after day two, no higher than 80, day three, a 70, and after day three, the maximum credit the student can get on the late work submitted would be a 50.
I will then close this out here with the remaining slides. So also here as a part of our presentation, addressing redoing failing assignments. So students will be allowed to be able to redo assignment within three days after, and that's three school days after. The actual assignment is posted into the grade book in Ascender. So parents have access to be able to sign up for parent portal. So whenever they're actually posting them in the Ascender program after the student has made a failing grade. And then the maximum amount is going to be for credit to redo an assignment is a 70.
And then I will take the last one here, Ms. Martinez. So the key here is agree with the first one that I talked about, we want to do away with. Really truly, in working with my cabinet, we identify just the need to have the contact. So the student's in the class, parent contact, my email, no later than the third week of grading period, that gives us enough time to really take a look and see how are they doing in the class. From there is a phone call. From there is a parent conference. And then on the fourth contact is a captain administrator or Disney email with parents. So we want to make sure that we're collaborating with our parents, not just their email, not the phone call, but we generally, genuinely have a concern as we want to make sure there's an actual parent conference. From there, if there's still failure, we definitely want to get the administrator involved to make sure they're also having that conversation and really giving us a chance to set up a framework. So the reason we don't see weeks anymore is from that phone call, we want to do a time in order to work through what was discussed in the phone call. If they're still failing, we definitely want to bring them back in for a conference, discuss it there, set up an aim plan. Still not seeing the success we want to see there, we definitely need to then involve the captain administrator. And so that would be the fourth contact. And we just reset each time as needed.
So that's the end of that presentation?
Yes, sir. This is what we'd like to add into and work into the second semester.
Questions, Ms. Vasquez?
Ms. Rodriguez? My question is having to do with making up the work. What are we going to do to help address situations, you know, same thing when I log into my daughter and I've heard many other parents say this, if we do an assignment on, let's say, the 13th and it gets graded and inputted into the system on the 24th, which happens to be a day before grades come out, obviously, what kind of opportunity are we affording kids? And this happens over and over and I get it. I don't know what the answer is there to allow teachers more time during the day to also do, I mean, I know plenty of teachers that unfortunately are doing homework at nine o'clock at night, I get it, you know, but I also see the other side of the puzzle on how are we giving our kids ample time when we're inputting grades a week and a half later? And same thing, when you ask a kid to make up work that was an assignment done a week and a half ago, what kind of true knowledge are they having to try and come back up with?
So to address that at the high school specifically, on Friday afternoon, we're running grade reports for, just general grade reports for every teacher to see how many assignments were, have been inputted into the grade book. Monday morning, myself and Ms. Ayala go a little deeper in to make sure that there, every student has received those grades and that they have actually been put. So for instance, if there's an M or there's a zero in there, we can go back and check every week to see, okay, so student A had four, two grades first week, student A had zero grades the second week. Why is that? We can have those conversations. So if a kid is absent, the teacher can just say, oh, the kid, the student was absent, that's why they weren't able to get those grades. But we're monitoring that a little more closely, hopefully to eliminate any sort of instances of that.
And I guess my only other question, I know at the elementary level, it's gotten significantly better with communication from teachers, letting parents know about the kids having opportunities to do makeup work. So I know that has gotten extremely better. I don't know what's being done at junior high or high school, and I noticed something in there about parent, I guess, requesting, but what is the status, you know, every day my daughter, I ask her, you know, hey, do you have any more? Because I get your grades and many are below 70. Are you bringing home those assignments to, you know, so we can work with you on making up some of that work and make sure you understand? But at the junior high or high school level, is it parents and kids that are having to engage in this, or are they automatically be giving, getting the work back? What is the problem or what's?
I'll start with you. Flip to the slide you named, redo failing assignments. So right there, one of the things we're putting in there is to redo assignment students, we allow them to redo assignment or assignment within three days after the grades plus to ascend to solve some of that problem, the teachers are doing that, because sometimes things do come up. If the coach just called, there's an illness, also gets posted. So what we've been working on, one thing the board knew we did last year was put an I for incomplete and making sure that if that's the case, if there's opportunity for redoing, we definitely say incomplete. So that is their responsibility along with mine to make sure that within the system, we adequately train our teachers. And that's why I'm asking for implementation, second semester to go through, start to work through some of these issues there, but just to make sure we're addressing it in a timely manner.
But the second part of the question?
I'll let them do it. Or secondary, how's it looking at the secondary?
Well, but I mean, are we, like I said, are the students and parents having to engage to ask for their kid to be able to, like, in other words, if we have a grandparent that's not logging in because they don't know how to work this thing, and their kid's got six, seven grades, if that parent nor that child asks to make up those seven grades because they're not aware of the policy still, like I said, I know elementary's pushed out information saying, you can do this. Has junior high and high school done that to communicate to parents and kids? And are they having to engage in that, or are teachers offering them the opportunity to make up the work?
I could definitely generate something to post out and so that way we can put it out in social media and Black
put out in social media and Blackwater, and I can definitely put something out, I have not done that specifically yet. I have told the teachers that it is on them as a direct reflection, the students failing, why are we making sure to have that contact, we emailing parents? And I told them if they do email a parent to carbon copy me, so I can make sure that I see you, so as soon as he's failing XYZ, at least email, we call, and if you call a document on email as well.
And we actually, we now have it in edge report that we're documenting. So, we actually have the tracking, we can do the logs, and they can actually go in the system and take a look at the marks, and look at the logs, and that's where we jump back to the notification failure. So, it's making sure we're doing that communication.
But I guess I still revert back to, if we lined up 25 high school kids right now, would they know this is a policy?
No, we haven't rolled this out yet.
No, but this is already a policy for us.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, would they know that this is a correct policy?
I, I would, I would venture to say the majority, but I couldn't guarantee a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and as far as junior high, I know that is going to be something that we will continue to work on. Right now, one of the things that I have really tried to get my staff members to understand is when they are making contact, part of the problem is that it's unsuccessful contact. So, they may have made a phone call, nobody answered, voice box wasn't able to have any messages to be able to be left. What I've also now started to implement is referring those out for myself and my administration to be able to, although, we might have a better success because we have other open opportunities, teachers confined in the classroom, I might be able to have where, make a phone call at a different time, or getting my vehicle and do a home visit, so that way, we can be able to really not have that happen. Because I think part of the reason with that, parents not understanding is we still have that lack of communication and wanting to make sure our staff members know that it's not okay not to be able to have direct, successful communication, put it on us as administrators, so that way, we can reach out. And if we have to go through other messages, that's going to be something that we're going to be, we're working hard on, not being okay with just having, well, we reached out, or we sent an email, maybe they didn't see it, or maybe they didn't understand it. We also have a lot of our community that are not English speakers, we have Spanish speakers. Now, myself, I'm not, I'm not a pro, I'm not a degreed individual in other languages, but I definitely can communicate in what's the most dominant, Spanish here around this area. I can facilitate a conversation for a teacher, and so, offering my services and assistance, not being okay with unsuccessful parent communication. And we're going to continue to get better at it. We're not where I want to be right now, but we're definitely on the road to be able to make improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Bessa, Mr. Almanaz, Mr. Garza?
I would say, you know, under the comments, Mr. Martinez, I think, the important thing is that we establish a relationship with parents from early on in the school year, so that they understand the expectation, that, so that they receive the, you know, we give a call, that it's, it's not about, you know, telling you what's not happening, it's like, this is the relationship that we are building, and this is a relationship we need to keep our students successful. So, again, thank you for your efforts, and I think the important component here is helping families realize that that relationship component needs to be seen as a must and positive encounter versus, oh, they're calling about John again, because he's not doing his work.
Well, and I think that's a very fair comment to make, sir. One of the things also with us having to do more work is, again, being visible in the community, we're here all hours that were required here throughout the day, but then also attending other extracurricular events, community events, making sure that we're visible, but then, exactly what you said, making sure that parents and the community members understand that we're their partners, we're not their adversaries, we're here to establish good working relationships. Maybe because a student might be struggling, doesn't mean that they're going to have to struggle forever, making sure that they understand that we're going to be a part of a team, it's going to take a team effort in order to help support these children, and make sure that they understand that, you know, just because I might not be your child's teacher, doesn't mean that I might not be able to help your child be successful. And so, we're definitely playing those things and making sure that parents feel comfortable enough talking with us. Just today, I had a 40-minute conversation with a parent that started off with a concern, but then we started talking about other things, and really and truly, that was the first time I talked to that parent. I have a pretty good feeling that now that, whenever an issue or a concern's going to come up, that parent's going to feel comfortable enough to call and make sure that we have some of those. That's just one instance, but my hope is that we can continue to grow that, develop that community approach, and make sure that parents understand that we're here to be their partners.
Well said, thank you. We will move on.
Thank you. Superintendent report, 9A enrollment.
So, breaking down real quick here, so, ACC damages a few kids, elementary up, even at junior high, and up to Little High School, overall, up from last month, three additional last names joined us. And we're up to over, I believe, a cost taken in 90 transfer students in our district.
Thank you. Move on to 10A, discuss and take possible action regarding policy DH local, CK, C local, and GKA local as adjusted to support the Guardian program. I'll make a motion, we approve the policy adjustments as presented by administration. Got a motion by myself, a second by Mr. Bessa. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, state aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion passes six oh. 10B, discuss and take possible action regarding Guardian program procedures and regulations. You have the document before you, any questions on this? If not, I'll call for a vote. Or, I'm sorry, a motion. Got a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, got a second. Second by Mr. Bessa, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, state aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion passes six oh. 10C, discussing, uh, we already did 10C, thank you. 10D, discuss and take possible action regarding approving the addition of a deputy superintendent position at central office. Any problems?
So, I'm going to repeat the needs of our students and staff. Since taking over, we've gained over 100, 100, almost 100 great by our students, with great work by the board, administration, staff, we have not had a deficit of kids since 1819, but I'm worried how long the captain myself can keep the pace. For example, I don't want to use probably more first names and last names, Letty out there, in addition to managing all special programs with students, also takes a great burden on handling all federal programs for me, which is originally a task that was given to the deputy superintendent. Safety, Ms. Martinez coming on board, transitioning from Dr. Moncha, Ms. Martinez spends many evening and weekend working on safety concerns to keep our safe, so much so that we actually passed our tuition audit this morning for the district, committed, great success there with what he's been doing there. Dr. Myers, in addition to working everything we need to make sure, she's a special high school, also oversees DAP. Dr. Hewitt, not that she's not busy already with two campuses, but also assists with supporting the SEL along with Ms. Letty, as well as all of our counselors within the district. CTE is something that's handled by Dr. Myers and also Ms. Lopez. HR is handled by Ms. Trish McMillan, Ms. Brittle, and of course, myself. And so, that burden is taking quite a bit off and on my team, so much so that I worry about how long we can continue to maintain this effort I'm trying to achieve in the district while going back and always looking for areas of opportunities. But I will tell you honestly, with everything taking place and new mandates and new guidelines, it has caused me to spend a lot more time dealing with deputy superintendent duties when I really need to be the superintendent, and that's in charge of construction in the district. So, this position with assist does not only with those areas and takes some of that burden off our plates, ability to individuals I mentioned, that it also assists, and Mr. Smith, you were there today, we talked about how lovely grants are to complete, that it also assists with grants, supporting SROs, the teacher incentive allotment, and taking a look at public, assisting me with supervising some of these directors on app, so I can focus more energy and time with my executive directors as well as my principals. And also, some of the areas that we can assist in, so it would be library services, as well as making sure all the handbooks and handouts have some of these things we're identifying here as all of us are stretched thin trying to support our students. I'll leave you with this, asking for help is not a sign of weakness, it's an understanding that we all need help to reach our goals. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And just a little historical data, I was thinking about it today, I know we have a couple of new folks, and mostly folks that have been around for a while. I think the first assistant superintendent started out as an assistant to the superintendent and rolled into an assistant superintendent probably in 94, 95 timeframe with Ms. Perino under Mr. Mucci, uh, under Mr. Barto. And then, it rolled into, Ms. Perino was the superintendent, and she promoted Ms. Catherine Feltner, who was in charge of GT, she was our assistant superintendent. Transitioned into, Ms. Feltner retired, Mr. Mucci Gambaloo from high school principal to assistant suit, replaced. Long story short, every superintendent, Dr. Moncha did go a year or so without an assistant suit, that is when he came to me, or Ms. Voskus, whoever was in charge at the time, and recommended that he needed more assistance, and that's when Dr. Flores came into the picture. Of course, Dr. Flores took over his interim, we had a wonderful identifier, Mr. Speck, and of course, Dr. Flores was put in a closet and never allowed to come out under Mr. Speck. And then, we transitioned into Coen. And same thing, we started without an assistant superintendent, after about a year in, he came to us and stated, same thing, if you want me to be successful, I need help. And that's when we went to Dr. Stewart, and then, of course, we transitioned from Dr. Coen, and of course, had a couple of interims, and then, Mr. Collins, at the beginning, I did ask him if he would like an assistant suit, he wanted to kind of get the ball rolling and see where we stood, and see if he could handle it all. And I think, kind of what he just mentioned is it's not so much of what, I guess, he can't handle, but it's also these other folks out here that are probably stretched, not probably, stretched pretty thin, you know, and, and I, I do go back and forth, I did hear the comments, I hate doing away with it, starting it again, I hate doing this back and forth because it sends different vibes to our community, and I'm not a fan. I think once a position's there, it's needed, we need to stick with it, and stop doing away with it, if we're going to move that route. But every month, I sit there and I look academically, and, you know, we're making gains, but, you know, we got, we got a lot of catch-up to play. And it's, it's from generational issues here, and, you know, a constant change in administration, you know, and it's a catch-22, because if we keep changing administrators, we're going to keep starting from ground zero, and we're going to have to restart, and sit there and play the blame game on the past and everything else that we always end up doing, so, that's just kind of the historical data. But since 1994, 1995, for the most part, we've, we've had that position per se. Ms. Voskus, your thoughts? If any. Ms. Rodriguez?
No comment.
Mr. Bessa?
No comment.
Mr. Almanaz? Mr. Garza?
Fortunately, unfortunately, I got comments. All right, so, I, as a board, we know we have serious gaps, Mr. and Chief, right now, that we've been trying to overcome for years, and as a board, we've tried every anticipatory action to prevent gaps from developing in the first place. Tonight, we're presenting with some numbers that we can't really say are showing our students are on break point presently. I think as a board, we're in a position to really focusing on this student achievement and side of what we do here in the district, and once we can truly say that these gaps are closing, or the majority of our students are on break point, then maybe we can talk about expanding on administration. I understand that there, there's always been lots of mandates, there's always been challenges in education and running of districts. I wonder if there could be other options where we can use this, this, this salary position, are there other options that we can consider that would maybe alleviate some of the, the pressures the administration is feeling, but at the same time, not take away from, you know, focusing in on the student, student achievement side? I feel like, I just feel like, I, I've seen this district with an assistant, without an assistant, and I really think organization and accountability is a, is a big key in helping everything be successful, especially our students. I'm not sure that I would support a deputy superintendent position at this point until I can really see that our, we are adding effective destruction on the classroom, and the students are showing that they are closing the gaps, making gains. What I don't want is for, just, not necessarily a distraction, but I hope, again, you know, we can talk about the excuses we've heard over the years, and being that the way we're created, we've just been presented, where our students are standing, I feel like we really need to focus in on that end of this, of running this district, and maybe sometime in the future, once we can, we really got a grasp on accountability at a high school level, I'm still, um, then maybe we can talk about building up on the administrative side.
You and I, I mean, you know that we, you and I have had lots of talk about this, and I've discussed this issue pretty in-depth, you know, last Friday, we spoke for a while. And I go back and forth on the issue as far as politically, okay? But what I do know is, and we've said it many times up here, I'll never forget, when Mr. Mucci Gambaloo hired Vin Johnson, and I remember one of the first conversations we had about assistant suit is, we don't care what the heck you do, but you need to figure this out academically because we're not where we want to be, you go figure it out. Next thing you know, a month or two later, he's bringing like six programs for us approved all at once, and then, the same, you know, hypocritical, literally, we're like, wait a minute, are we trying to do a million things but not really be good at anything? You know, so he goes, he starts implementing everything, overwhelming everybody. So, I say that to say that, you know, I do joke around with this gentleman sometimes because I can recall two superintendents very vividly that sat behind that desk 95% of their day, and watching this guy run around like a ragdoll, when I'm up here, a few times I'm up here, you know, it tires me out, and it reminds me of me and the fact that I never stopped, I just go, and I wear myself out. I can tell that he's wearing out quickly as a leader because of the physical, emotional, stressful strain that this job entails, and I'm not saying he can't handle it, but I think if we want him to be really good at leading, then I think we have to give him the proper tools to also be successful. And I realize that, you know, just like anybody else, a new leader, a new coach, or anything else, we're still trying to figure out, you know, what the leader is about. And I think some of that is on us too, for not truly having a team of eight and having roundtable discussion with us as a board and superintendent, kind of really, you know, I think, and I've talked about this too, is I think this board, a lot of times, it's you and I being our talkative selves, and then we don't really know everybody, you know, I, I've really encouraged other board members to speak on this issue because I think it's a huge issue and it's going to be huge politically, and I think it's more than both. I think it's something that we really need to be on the same page, and either agree or disagree, but agree to support whatever the board decision here, because things like this can divide the district and divide the board. And if we want him to be successful, which is us being successful, which is these folks being successful, I really feel we need to join forces, and like I said, I really feel like we need to figure out, you know, if we're not getting what we need from him as a leader, then we need to ask those questions or have those meetings to find out, you know, what we're seeing in the market. You know, just like Matt, yes, I get frustrated, but it does mean I don't believe in visibility, you know, I took a hundred percent. Uh, I took a hundred percent blame for not reviewing, not really documenting enough enough, realized that there was something missing that I assumed was gonna be on there, so I take the blame for that. But I just, I do, I do feel that, you know, I, I feel like that, and, and I could be wrong, but I do feel like, I mean, I know, I did tell Gavin, you know, two assistant suits ago, one of the biggest complaints was not what he was doing, that he didn't really, he was sitting in traffic, two thirty in the way room with the crew. I know that. And rode out at a four. I get that too. But I still feel like a lot of good things took place during those hours, you know, and I do believe that thanks to Donald Stewart and Lori and admin at the time, they helped us start to turn the curve. So now here we are right now on the risk of trying to continue that curve upward and, you know, he's requesting assistance, so.
So we're in the same academic position that we've been in for the past several years.
No, sir, we've actually not ever been when we ever have. As well as, um, now to within the high school, CCMR indicators as well for the most recent.
So, so, you know, and I, like I said, based on the, the E O I and the E C side, you know, I'm still trying to put the information together and, and digest it, you know, if you're presented like that in the past.
The, the E O I is what I invented last year as recommendations from the board and the format that decided on. So this is actually what I, with history of months articulated in that format, so that way you can see it just the way it seemed. But again, this information is the beginning of your data, so you're only against the beginning of your data.
I'm not going to be against.
Then our success is the best we've ever been in.
Every, every year, you can determine, this board has supported every administration one hundred percent for every recommendation that has been brought across. Our students have always been the board's priority, their achievement. My perspective right now is just to divert from what we've been doing in the past because we are re- I'm ready to see greater achievement on the student class side. I, I know you're sitting on the board and by the way, Mr. Piles, I have one hundred percent confidence that you can be very successful in this district. So don't doubt that one second to my question or my approach. I believe that you can be successful in this district all around. So me not supporting this position at this time does not mean I don't support you. I asked earlier about what other options do we have? I see you running around with that idea. Do we need to prioritize all of your spending on time? I, I love seeing that crowd walk in the morning, but if we, if we have money for a deputy superintendent, what if we were to add an S R O? And what if during that morning time, you could be walking with, I assume, the term teachers or catch jump or whatever, you know, the plan is gonna be for that day, we, um, I really think that we'd, uh, I would like this board to more emphasis on seeing our progress on the student side, that we can, you know, really say that, okay, students are, are on break level, um, teachers are beginning, both one hundred percent, I said in the classroom. And, uh, that's, that's just my perspective, you know? And I say options, like, well, you might say, well, what do you mean by the stars? We're not an option, my option, I don't know, like, this is my idea. Do we need to create, and I know what you, you have, um, it is a, uh, a list that might be daily, weekly, quarterly, yearly, to keep things in perspective so that you don't feel overwhelmed? Cause like you can prioritize where you put in your focus and not waste your energy on the lower level, uh, activities. Um, like I said, I, I just don't, we've always supported a hundred percent administrative recommendations. Right now, I feel like I, my personal opinion, I want to change my approach and I want to keep them in this on the front and what we do here being students and teachers. And sometime in the future, maybe we can reconsider adding, adding this position. Because theoretically, we have leaders at every level in this district. Now, if we're being respectful on time and, and only giving them the responsibilities to, to, you know, to keep them successful, I, I don't, I don't know how adding another, you know, I kind of feel like it would take away some of the accountability, not that currently our administrator is not doing what he needs to, but, you know, if, again, everyone is, uh, just performing with fidelity and, and seeing things, doing, and all people accountable, um, I, I just think that the focus really needs to stay local, it needs to stay on our teachers, it needs to stay on our students.
Well, let me ask you this, Ron, and this is, you know, obviously since you and I spoke Friday, I've all week, and if you think this hasn't kept you up, it has, uh, obviously you get a call back earlier that obviously for your folks, we're gonna come share their thoughts on things and, you know, they're just three of the, the, not many, but, you know, handful of folks that are not, I guess, supportive of this. Um, but, you know, I start, okay, let's take this gentleman out of the picture for a second, okay? So let's say we don't feel he needs help, for a second. Okay, he's, he's got adequate amount of time to get everything done that he needs to get done. But what about the duties that our junior high principal, who's in year one, okay, he's in year one, but we're also putting safety on him, which is probably the biggest thing that's forced eleven folks to retire in the last six months out of region twenty alone from being a superintendent. I spoke to three out of those eleven, safety was the main reason, three out of those eleven, I would assume probably more than three, but three out of the eleven is retired, okay? We look at this young lady here who's in charge of two campuses now, which is about thirty percent more students than we've ever had at U C C elementary. And so we have her trying to turn around two campuses with years of generational issues when it comes to A L A R. Trust me, I'm, I'm as frustrated as you and I don't have the answers either. You know, I have two kids that struggle tremendously academically, you know, and apart of the selfish means, like, shoot, surely those teachers are helping my kids? Well, I take on myself and I got a master's test earlier on, but I'm also not moving to help my kids because it falls on us too. But the point being is back to her, so we look at her in charge of two campuses over pre-K three through fifth grade, and then we also want to put her in charge of not just, hey, you go ahead and do that, but by the way, you also handle discipline, you also handle kids that are biting, kicking, hitting teachers on a daily basis, but also find time to meet with parents, also find time to oversee counselors that have increased responsibilities. And then we look at high school, you know, we know the, the fun that comes with high school with all the different things that come with high school. And so I, I, what kind of, I guess, I won't say changed my view, but helped sway my view over the weekend was when I really thought about not just one person, but everyone else in this room that this position affects. And at the same time, I, I truly feel that if this gentleman and these folks didn't need it, then I would have probably got some ministers from, from these folks saying, you're really giving that guy help? He doesn't do anything. It sits behind the desk. Because we had that with past administration, towards somebody didn't get off their butt to really help these folks. Like I said, the man's not bad in a thousand, he knows that, we know that, you know, but at the same time, the man's giving it hell and he's trying. And I feel like if, if we vote this down, we're hurting not just him, but we're hurting every person in this room because it affects every person in this room. And, and like I said, I think his growth is only gonna come if we grow. But that is on each one of us sitting up here to help him succeed. And, and like I said, I failed him tonight by not doing a better job because of my busy schedule, which isn't an excuse, but for not catching that on that report, I failed him and embarrassed him because I didn't do my job. And I take full responsibility for that. But I think it's on each one of us and, and like, and you did say it perfectly, and it is frustrating because we have voted and, and, and maybe before you, but since I've been on the board, we voted on one administrative recommendation since I've been on this board. One, just one. So you would think we'd be great academics here, but we're not. But at the same time, unless we want this gentleman to move on, which I don't, but I think that we have to give them, just like every other administration, you know, we, we throw our marbles in and we hope that we did our job when we vetted out all of those candidates, you know, I just spoke to a, another individual who made the top three and talked to her about her experiences where she's at, and it's just a roller coaster, you know? And it's just, it's not an easy job right now. But I don't, I don't have the answers and I don't think anybody on this board has the answers on how to make this place magically better. I, I don't. Um, you know, I, I hope and pray every day that everyone is doing their due diligence because at the end of the day, if any of these campus leaders fail, they fail and that's on all of us, you know? And so I, I don't think anybody's here ill-willing trying to make this place fail. But I do feel that, you know, yes, we need to hold this gentleman accountable and yes, we want him to hold these folks accountable and down the line, but, you know, I, I do think this board has to do a better job of communicating concerns and thoughts and ideas as soon as we get the two folks in from the November election, wherever that might be. I've already talked to the attorney and we're gonna have a real team of eight sit down so we can talk and really get to the bottom of where we want to go as a district. You know, we stamp our, the Lone Star Government's goals and say, yes, this is what we want. Well, that's what admin tells us we want. But if there's other concerns from this board, then we need to get them out, we need to air them out, and we need to talk it out, and we need to move forward. Because as long as we're in neutral and spinning our wheels and getting frustrated each month, it's not helping us move forward. And like I said, that's on me too. But I really feel that we have to do a better job, that seven of us, of being communicative with this gentleman on what, what our needs are or what we feel the district needs are and then back them up with facts on, on our concerns. I'll open the phone.
That the grade we're talking about, we saw tonight, they're not fading grades, they're starting to upgrade. The quality is not fading grades, it's been a lot of stuff. And that we don't give this man hell, we're bringing him to life. We need to give him hell, we need to help people. Sorry, Mark.
And it, and, and another thing too, and I'm just gonna say this too, is, is I can promise you, if you talk to that gentleman in the blue, he's coaching his kids different than he did five, six, seven years ago. There's a lot of people that call him soft now. He's having to coach his kids different because his kids are different. Our parents are different. It's a different item. There's very few high school kids that go home and get put in, in trouble for getting detention, for being targeted, you know? That happened to me. It's a different timeframe and it's the same with the staff, with the, the level of stress. I mean, we saw, we still have opens. Why? Nobody's knocking down our doors to try and get in here because of our pay and what we can afford to pay. We're paying well for a school our size, you know, but the point being is, we've gotta play a, a fine line between raising expectations, like I said, yes, I'm gonna come in every month and just really rip because I'm frustrated that my own two kids are so struggling academically. But I've still got to either pull them out or trust the talk I talk, which is trusting us and trusting these folks. Cause if I don't have that faith, then it's, how, how is anybody else gonna have that faith? And I know faith runs thin, I know, I feel, we talk all the time, how we feel like sometimes we're spinning our wheels, but at the same time, if we had approved every superintendent recommendation of one, in the last twenty-five, twenty years, you know, we're trusting every person we bring to this audience until we realize it's not working and then unfortunately sometimes we move on. But I, I just don't know what the magical answer is. But I don't know if it's not because of some early differences of opinion and/or frustrations and/or lack of communication both ways from the board, from the superintendent, that we don't afford a position that, like I said, affects everyone in this room and all our kids.
Yeah, you know, and I hate that my, my regard on this subject can easily be seen as negative, but just like I believe this man can be very successful to achieve everything he wants over his kids in this district, I have that same belief for every administrator, for every C and I person, for every teacher in this district. So with that being said, I just, again, you know, and I don't want accountability to sound like a bad name, I just, you know, I truly believe we've always had a great staff. Now, the failures have been that we didn't maybe nurture or develop for those daily leadership opportunities to, to show themselves from teacher to kid, from student to teacher. And I think, uh, we fell in that part and not helping to develop because regardless if it's the current staff or the previous staff, I believe both could be very successful. It's not about the individual, they, they're here because they want to be here, they chose this center to conquer and, you know, if they're not fulfilled, that's on us because we did not develop that relationship to find out what can I do to help you. Or maybe we weren't clear on expectations, maybe we didn't follow up with, you know, expectations for whatever department. And I'm, I'm deciding more on that perspective. You know, and like I said, I'd like to see more, uh, you know, just, just more progress on the faculty side. And, and I know we're getting, earlier we've seen that we're getting, you know, any fight And that's just how I feel, you know, and it's, it's always been a hundred percent support. And I am just questioning how we've governed in the past in this regard. Are we doing what drives our kids by, you know, maybe just fully, you know, I mean, what's the purpose of the board if we cannot, uh, not necessarily challenge, but, you know, question and figure out what other options are? Cause I'm not beating up here if we're gonna continue at one hundred percent support without trying to do any good.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I don't have to say. I'm sorry. I don't, I believe he is successful already and, uh, I also believe that, uh, he would work just as hard if he had an assistant. He would still be running around and going here and improving those things where he has a little bit more time. But the number one thing that, that I would go for is that I trust him. I do trust him and I believe that he wouldn't pursue this line unless he's already looked at options and this is the best option to improve the school.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? I guess two questions for you, Mr. Piles, just for transparency purposes is number one, or three questions. Um, number one, is your current admin aware that this was being brought forward or being talked about as an intervention?
Yes.
Number two, when would this potential position
Number two, when would this potential position be posted and when would be your game plan to potentially bring somebody in if approved?
Possibly, uh, initially in a part through, as far as what I was considering was posting and taking, uh, and all time to actually make little candidates. So I would not be looking, you know, come back to the board until second semester. It could be January, February, it wouldn't be sooner than the second semester, sir.
Okay. And then I guess question number three is. I, 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 obviously we have two more positions that we spoke about last week that are on your, which are item ten E and ten F. Um, obviously I know there's a difference between the one and the need. Do you feel that there are other needs that are currently not being met that your administration has either asked for? Or is it aware there's a need, but they're afraid to ask for in this, in reference to other positions currently not being afforded to them? But yet we would be giving you per se, even if it's unanimous, but. You know, there are other positions out there that are, there's needs according to your admin, we all need, that are being overlooked. You know, that is going to be brought forth.
As far as I know, I made a point to sit down with Patricia and with Norma and every individual in this room for the departments and making sure I made the needs of my students. So that was then waiting for us to meet up in the spring of twenty, that was last year and just looking at what the needs are. So I actually, those ladies actually spent time with me, my ability to know that the first place is probably going to put a funding and support is somewhere in the next two to three. And it's the small facilities, we've actually left sort of one on throughout the district, we've actually targeted all the other locations. So again, I made a point to have these individuals who are kind of pulled up, that they can kind of be an advocate for their needs on their campus. We set, I set through new positions that over the years that I've been on board and in addition to somewhere actually funded currently right down with the SRO funds. And we're wary of relooking at the potential cliff and making sure we're addressing funding sources to make sure we continue to provide at those locations. Such as area professionals supporting kindergarten, the students and second grade to interventionist, which you guys have something about, we might have to show on board. So that's already been addressed, so just looking for those areas, but I can honestly tell you, I made a point to talk to every one of them, we tried to transition staff members. That were, uh, part-time positions, the full-time positions, supporting these students. So this is one of the last location we're looking at, definitely to support all of them as well as our staff, sir.
And, and just for more transparency, you know, I did go over the, I mean, I was probably said some things that were probably great area earlier with. Some, even those two things that have happened or been assumptions of past assistant suits, both program and con. You know, I did discuss those with him, you know, and. You know, did let him know that all of those are reality from what many of our staff members felt in the past, both program and con. You know, before him making this recommendation also, so. Any other que- questions, Minister Argen? Mr. Almandades? Mr. Bessa? Minister Rodriguez? Minister Smoskis?
I will call for a motion on this side.
Move.
I've got a motion by Mr. Almandades, do I have a second? I do have a motion on the floor, one Mr. Almandades is second by Mr. Bessa, uh, only other question I have, sir, is. When would you notify the board of a potential salary range prior to posting the position? A salary range for this position, when would that be? You know, will you discuss?
I voted out prior to posting, yes, sir. I can make sure that goes in more tests.
Thank you. Any other questions? We do have a motion on the floor, we do have a second, I'll call before we vote, I show hands, all in favor with the show hand, please. All against? Motion does pass out of the one, thank you. Timmy, discussing take possible action regarding the hiring of a maintenance manager.
So this is in order to actually assist us in the maintenance area. Um, currently right now, we have different individuals, but we only have one that's actually certified within a trade. So what we're looking at is actually making, uh, move height position currently at the maintenance to a negative position. Hopefully enticing someone with actually trade experiences come in and do assistance in projects throughout the district. Manage the projects, condition the direction, train other team members and acquire other certifications for these for our district. Just trying to raise someone else in that has some of the trade experience. Right now, we don't have a barbure, we have some gentlemen that can do some footwork. We have electrician, so just that idea to entice some of the company assistants with some of these additional projects. And then also keep those who have to go outside and get bids and get quotes and bringing them outside and folks who can do it internally. Kind of the same thing what we did with the Ajack individual, now we have the Ajack person, so you guys will not have to come down for AC services.
Are there any questions on this? If not, I'll open the floor for a motion. Got a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, I have a second. Second by Mr. Almandades, any discussion? If not, on the paper, say aye. Aye, all oppose. Motion passes six oh. Ten F, discussing take possible action regarding the hiring of a bi- level support construction need for secondary campuses.
So part of our reviewing of, uh, support for house level three is looking at our subpopulations. If you notice what Miss Lady presented earlier today, I have some AC stress, I feel like I'm not supporting my, uh. My beginning level EL students, emerging learners coming in, especially the secondary level. And remember, gen- technically you have that DCC and elementary level, they have baseline foundational instruction. But in the case of our secondary campuses, if I had individuals coming in to emerge with no academic knowledge or any sort of formal training in their other country. And so we'll look at an individual, we can basically help the students, so a little bit of academic knowledge at secondary level. Staff need for support and training, I know that, we need to, we need to get that going, but that doesn't solve the problem right here, right now. So this is what actually would you consider more case manager, working through the facilities of the department. Someone that could have a single focus on a group of students, also being advocate for the students. Also being advocate for the parents, being able to communicate with the parents and just help these students be successful at our secondary campuses. Not that these administrators should not, it's just a unique situation where I really look for someone that has five meaningful speaking experience to support these students.
I guess the only thing that's crossed my mind and this is not in any form or fashion be grating any of our structural aid because I know how. Into. How important they are to the district. But, but the rigor of some of the high school, and we know ourselves, many of us that sit up here when we've been to some of those ASG conventions and that show those different grade levels of, uh, homework, including my fifth grade heart comes on with some app. But I'm pretty sure we didn't do it in fifth grade. Um, point being is you've got folks who are A's, who are like me, who don't have that for your flat two degree. And that some of this rigor is above their expertise.
And so what I'm going to do is embed that individual of those two minutes right there. So you're going to have first gen access to Miss Lady on her side and Miss Lopez on her side, so again that. So then all of a sudden they start running, they can go to the management team, get assistance whether it be mathematics, social science or English mental talks.
How does it look now at our time attractive, those are our salary range, hasn't it taken us a while to fill normal A positions?
It, everything is a challenge, yes, sir. So, but.
Will it be any kind of siphoning for this since it is a little more than your average, I'm just wondering something.
That would be something if, again, what I'll do is if it's approved, I would work back with my team to kind of identify a salary range.
Should have talked to you ahead of time, but just something we're going to remind to do.
So that was there, so yes, we needed, we probably have to go, we're going to have to angle a little bit bigger up here, especially if we're, so this is looking for someone that can actually get out of file duty.
Okay, because I'm, I don't care what the idea is, I just, what's happened with some of these kids at the high school is unacceptable and I want to make sure they have support, so.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or discussion? I'll make a motion, we approve this position as recommended by administration. Got a motion on myself, second by Mr. Rodriguez, any further discussion? If not, on the paper, say aye. Aye, all oppose, motion passes six oh. Consent agenda. I'm going to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second, Mr. Almandades, any discussion? If not, on the paper, say aye. Aye, all oppose, motion passes six oh. Item twelve adjourned, make a motion or we're going to make a motion, we adjourn at ten twenty-two. I do need signatures from y'all, please, on the audits, I know that we audit books signed by each of you, so if you can please hang around and participate a couple of minutes.
Carrie, can you help him? Figure out what needs to be done?
For sure. I guess if y'all want to just roll yourself, walk down there.
I'm going to quit the board on the bike.
I can make it. I'm sweeping and I'm cold.
I'm past cold. I'm already thawed out, I refrozen, thawed out like fourteen pounds.
It's cold. I'm going to sit you right here, if you get elected, you're sitting right here.
Hey, Sunday in church in here, all the ladies bring jackets. Hey, but we used to sweat, so.
It was hot on that end. It was hot over there.